Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board's 16th meeting of fiscal year 2022. And Julia, that's hard to believe, is that really right, the 16th meeting? Okay, we are having our meeting live on cable access tonight and we are also having it on Zoom. If you would like to call in through Zoom, our meeting agenda is on the Planning Board Town of Milton website and you can find the meeting ID and passcode there. We can have these meetings via Zoom because of Governor Baker's order and extension for remote meeting provisions. All right, next items, our next meeting date is December 16th. And we have an informal gathering, the Planning Board members having a formal gathering, just a little holiday hello tomorrow at the Town Hall at 9:00 AM. So look forward to seeing Plan Board members. And our next meeting date is a week from tonight, December 16th. Rich is in here, so I'm going to table the approval of meetings till later or perhaps a new meeting. And I, Tim, did you have any staff update for us? I should actually go through and introduce everyone first. So I am Jenny Swenson, Chair of the Planning Board. Meredith?
Meredith Hall, member.
Cheryl?
Carl Togias, member.
Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
And Rich Beeler, Secretary, will be joining us a half an hour to 40 minutes late. Town staff, Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Julia?
Julia Getman Clark.
Okay, all right, so Tim, I'm ready for your staff update whenever you are.
We've been very busy as usual, I always say that because it's always true. Couple, a couple of things that will be coming down the pike in more detailed fashion in the coming weeks, so I'll save. One thing that I will say for folks that may not be paying as close attention as I am to the 40B hearings, I'm at every single one of them. The Board of Appeals approved the 582 Blue Hill Avenue project, not last night but the night before. Pending a detailed review of the final draft by the members. I don't think anything will come of that review, I think they very closely and deliberately deliberated on that decision. So if everything goes according to plan, we'll have a signed decision next week, which I may or may not deliver to HCD personally. I'm deciding whether or not I want to do that. But it means between the Ice House at 14 SHI units and Blue Hill Avenue Project at 84 SHI units. We will have, will be eligible for certification compliance of our housing production plan, which gets us years of safe harbor from New 40B projects. What that means is the ones that are currently active, East Milton, Canton Avenue, and then 16 Amor Road, 936 Brushell Road, and 728 Randolph Ave. Are still active, we have to decide those and hold public hearings. Those public hearings for those three new ones are going to start on January 13th. But any new ones that may come out of the woodwork between now and years from next week. We have the ability to reject those. And there's no recourse to the Housing Appeals Committee, which effectively, if you're smart, you just won't even propose a project in that window. So the whole point of the housing production, well, not the whole point, one of the, one of the points of the housing production plan, in addition to the data collection and analysis and strategies for housing production, is this ability to get safe harbor if you achieve your year-over-year housing goals. And you know, the thing about safe harbor is, you know, if you don't have to worry about dealing with a 40B project coming along, ostensibly you've got the time and the breathing room to execute some of those strategies in the housing production plan that will continue to grow the affordable housing inventory in town. And you know, if we play our cards right, maybe we never have a 40B ever again. That's the point of that safe harbor. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's a great outcome for the Town of Milton. It's, it's, you know, there's a lot of hard work that went into that plan, there's a lot of hard work that went into the review of those 40B projects. There's a lot of hard work going into the continued review of the additional 40B projects. But you know, it's, it's kind of, it buys us a window of time to continue to work hard to try to get to, you know, the statutory minima that are identified in 40B, you know, to get us to safe harbors that, you know. Permanent safe harbor, then the actual real hard work of how do we create zoning and land use regulations for our town that kind of achieve all of our planning goals? You know, without having 40B looming over our heads. So like my professors in grad school used to say, the city is never done, the work is never finished. But, you know, kudos all around to folks, folks in the neighborhood that participated in those hearings, the Board of Appeals, Planning Board members and Select Board members that, participate in our commentary, it's, it's a pretty good outcome, you know, considering where we started on that project. So that's all I have for a staff update right now. Like I said, we'll have some, some, some bigger news on some projects that are coming down the line at the new year. But I want to make sure that Karen has enough time to talk because I think it's important to, I don't know if you've ever heard from Karen before, she's our new Town Accountant Finance Director, but she's, she's not really that new anymore. So I'm glad that she was able to make it tonight.
Yes, I am too, I'm looking forward to, to meeting with Karen. Before we jump into that, we do not have Citizen Speak on our agenda, but I did notice that there's a number of people here tonight. And if anybody did want to speak, we, we're in deliberations on 440 Granite Ave, so we won't be inviting people to speak at that time. But if anyone wanted to speak to us about any matter, you're welcome to have a couple of minutes now. Just raise your hand if anyone wants to speak for Citizen Speak. So we have no takers. So we will, if you could introduce us, Tim, to Karen Provost.
Yeah, so Karen Provost is our, our, the Town Finance Director. Karen, when did you start?
I started in February of 2021.
Okay, so like I said, new, but, but she's, she's, she's got a couple of months under her belt, she's got a town meeting under her belt. So I wanted, I wanted Karen to kind of walk through kind of how she kind of looks at the Planning Board budget, how she looks at, at a lot of town board and department budgets. And, you know, answer some questions, give some clarity as to kind of the discussion about, you know, capital versus operating budget. I think just to sort of put a little context around this, there's no sort of change in kind of overarching accounting principles at work here. I think the fundamental lesson that I think the Planning Board should take away from this conversation is, you know, just like we plan ahead for the town, we should plan ahead for ourselves and kind of think through, you know, what are the projects and initiatives that we want to spend budget on in the next fiscal year and even the next fiscal year after that? And, you know, Karen's job is to, is to help us figure out, you know, where that money comes from. Capital budget, operating budget, other sources of funds. You know, if we can give her the sort of the plans and the ideas, she's a tremendous resource for kind of making sure that the numbers work. So Karen, I know you've got a little bit of discussion, I think you want to stop, but so please take it away.
Thank you, Tim, thank you to all the board members, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. As Tim was saying, I've been here since February, but I have more than 20 years' experience working in government. I worked for the City of Cambridge for 17 years as a Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And I worked as a Budget Director for the City of Brockton for two years prior to coming to Milton. So I'm very aware of Planning Boards and how the budget works. And I wanted to go over how the Planning Board's budget is authorized and appropriated by Town Meeting and just get a better understanding of the Mass General Laws in terms of you get the money, when you can use it and when you can spend it. So according to Mass General Law 44-56, it states that money that is appropriated by Town Meeting in the General Fund begins on July 1st and the end of the fiscal year is June 30th. So any money that you have been given permission to spend has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. It doesn't roll over from year to year to year. And what that means is that all services have to be provided by June 30th. If an invoice comes in in September, but it's for a service that was provided within the fiscal year, then that invoice could be paid later in the year, you know, waiting for that to come in. But those funds, if you have a planning, if you have a feasibility study, and that feasibility study goes past June, then the money at the end of the year, pretty much it rolls into our designated fund balance, which people call free cash. So it's kind of, if you don't use the money, then it's gone at the end of the fiscal year. So one thing I was talking to Tim was really looking at how the projects are planned. Because I don't want to run into a situation where you have the perception that there's 30,000 and 50,000 that has been appropriate for capital. And then at the end of the year, you think that money is still there and it rolls over from year to year. Unless it's voted in each year, and as I looked at previous years, there's a certain amount for your capital planning projects that are voted in each year. And so I just wanted to talk about what that capital plan for you looks like. So that if projects are delayed and you're not able to use that 50, then, and you know a project's going to occur between July and June, any type of feasibility or planning, or maybe the project that was delayed, maybe it goes over the amount that you normally request. So those are things that as we put the budget together, if there's supplemental requests that go above what has normally been funded, those are the different things that, you know, the Town Manager and the Select Board want to discuss and see. So that we make sure we have enough funding for your projects, you know, as, as you move through the fiscal year. And then another thing I wanted, if anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt me if you need more information or if it's too technical. If you don't understand, you know, I can slow down and I can explain in a different way if needed.
As you took that break, I just had a quick question about the voting on the capital expenditures. Do those have to be done, that's not done by Town Meeting, that's done by the Capital Committee?
So the Capital Committee needs, and we look at the capital plan and capital, capital projects for the town over the next five years. And that committee will then give a recommendation to the Select Board, and then that goes to Town Meeting, the Town Meeting votes on that. But I want to explain what capital means. So capital assets are any real or tangible property that's used in the operation of government. And it's usually any, it can't be converted into cash. And it has, it has to have a useful life extending beyond a single financial period. So that could be anything from land acquisitions, land improvements, infrastructure, roads, bridges, water, sewer lines, easements, buildings. Sometimes we'll have a capital fund. The difference between the General Fund and the Operating Fund is more accounting terms in terms of how long you can use the money for. So anything that's in a General Fund, it's by fiscal year, so July 1st to June 30th that you have to spend the money. Capital plans, the money, if the project continues, can be rolled over from year to year to year until the project is done. And normally those projects can be funded either through bonding. So if we go out to bond, it can be used from, you know, property taxes, whatever, it can be different funding sources that can fund that project.
So it seems odd that we would have, have any money, what would, what would a Planning Board do that would count as a capital expenditure?
It depends on. Possibly a plan or a study, like in an area, you know, in an area.
Now that's a cap, I mean, you know, I'm a, as I said, I'm a real, I'm a real estate attorney. We deal with capital expenditures and what, you know, what counts as, you know, when you're doing the income taxes, what counts as a capital expenditure. And I don't see how studies of any sort fall into that category.
It all depends on, oh, excuse me.
I was going to ask if, you know, streetscape improvements would, would be in align with that. Yeah, but that's not us.
Can you guys let Karen answer the question?
Yeah, sorry.
So as I mentioned before, you know, for capital assets, and these are things, as you were saying, Kathleen, you know, how does it fall into that? If you have a feasibility study that's going into a capital project, let's say it's a feasibility with design and construction. It all can fall under a capital project. So I'll give you a good example, if the fire station is a capital project, you're making improvements on a building which has a useful life more than one year. So within that capital project, you have design, there, you know, it could include a feasibility study for a traffic study that could be part of the scope of the architect's work, which falls under that particular capital, that capital asset. So if you're working on a project that is going to roll into another capital project, then that's where we could then have the funds appropriated as capital, but it would have to be part of a project where it, the capital asset has a useful life for more than one year.
Got it, thank you.
You are welcome.
May I ask a question now? Karen, my experience, having been on the Warren Committee and Town Meeting Member, is that there's often far more requests for Capital Improvement Committee than there's funds available for. And one of the things that the, and as someone who's advocated for years now for planning specific dollars, I have a large concern about having to compete for something that we've now had in our line item budgets. And a lot like Kathleen was saying, a lot of our planning effort has to do with, with zoning, with planning studies that may lead to zoning. And we hire consultants to help us because we, we have a small planning department. But it's not necessarily tied to a specific project, it might be tied to a, an area of town, sort of a region of town. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that these concerns, you know, the, it's been, I think, $50,000 for the Planning Board and $30,000 for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And what that's done is allowed us to get some zoning work and a lot of analysis that led to final zoning in Milton Village. It's allowed us to put some forth some work into developing a traffic model so that we can look at whether changes in our planning and our zoning would have, you know, impacts that need to be planned for in terms of traffic. But they're not tied to a specific project, so can you address that, please?
Yes, I can, so as we go through the capital, as we go through just planning the budget, we look at all of the budgets, we look at level funding, we look at supplemental requests. For your budget, I think this is more of a, so when I first started with the Town of Milton, there was a question on at the end of the fiscal year, why is this 50,000 going away? I thought I had this 50,000 and if I could encumber a project, then I could use that money, you know, in September, October, November. And I wanted to just make sure that people understand that every year, if you're receiving that 50,000 and 30,000, that's fine. But it's really important, and just as we're planning five-year plans for capital, we're looking at operating, and hopefully we'll have a five-year plan at some point for just our operations for the town that you want to make, you know, if you have projects that are going to exceed the 50,000, you're not going to use it for a year and you need, you need it for an additional year, just people want people to understand what the process is. So moving forward, I'm not stating that you should change how your budget is authorized or voted on by Town Meeting, but just have an understanding that at the end of the fiscal year, if you haven't spent that money, it doesn't roll over from year to year. It may appear that it does because each year it has been voted. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that because it was a question when I first came, when I first started with the town for this budget.
Okay, so there would be actually two tracks then, if I understand correctly. That one would be if we are sure that we would have a particular service that we want to procure and it would be done in, within the fiscal year, but that would still be the normal process that we've been using. But then if we have something that we anticipate going beyond that, then we would be looking at this Capital Improvement Committee process.
I'm really looking at capital improvement, more would be looking at maybe increasing your budget. So I'm going to give you an example, if you have your 50,000 and you have the 30,000 that you plan, and at the end of the fiscal year, you, you have the project, you're looking to move forward, there's unforeseen, unforeseen things that come up and the project gets delayed. We'll say the project gets delayed, you're not able to start the project, it's now August. But you now have a project for the new fiscal year. And now you're thinking, well, I had the 50 from last year and I have a new 50 for this year to cover. You, 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 you only have the $50,000 instead of the 100 from the previous year because the project was delayed. So this is more of making sure that we have conversations during the budget season to see exactly what work are you planning on having occur, working with the developers, working with the planners and the vent, in the contract to see exactly the cash flow when you think you're going to spend, spend the money. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So Karen, I, I, I had a question and, and, and I think it's sort of, so say, say we're doing a zoning study for, you know, the, the Blue Hills, all right, as an example, so that we don't scare anyone, we're not rezoning the Blue Hills, everybody, this is just. And, you know, so the, the way that the study is going to work, the timeline for that study is, is 18 months. And so, you know, definitionally, the, the invoices for that study are going to roll in over the course of two different fiscal years. So, and, and that's not necessarily tied to a capital project, it's tied to, you know, land use regulation that will maybe then lead to private development. You know, it may not be the definition of a capital project, but the, the timeline of the project itself spans multiple fiscal years. So, I mean, is that a situation, like, can we, can we sign that contract if, you know, and say it's like, you know, it's, it's, it's a $100,000 contract, you know, can we sign that contract and, and use one year's worth of $50,000 appropriation? And then the next year's, you know, the, the appropriation's been consistent, but it's also up to Town Meeting to do it. And they could decide in any given year not to do it, but then we've got a contract that we're obligated to, to, to pay. So I guess, I think the main concern that we have here is like, if we've got a project that doesn't fit in sort of the bucket of capital, but also the timeline extends beyond multiple fiscal years, what is the budget process for that?
Okay, so the only way that we can issue a contract is if we have appropriated funds. And that's why it's very important to have involved the Planning Board, that I'm working very closely with the department, has to find out exactly how much money you're going to need. So if last year you had 50,000, you're looking at doing a study that extends over 18 months or more than the 12 months or 20, then we need to make sure that you have enough funds each fiscal year to cover that particular operation. So if you, if you know your feasibility study this year was zero, maybe next year it's, you know, 70 or 80,000, which might be more than what you already have appropriated, those are the conversations and that's, those are the explanations that you have to bring forth to the Town Administrator, to the different boards and committees that are reviewing your budget. Because we want to make sure that we're funding your project, but we cannot authorize a contract unless we have enough funds appropriated by the Town Meeting. And, you know, with it not being able to roll over from year to year, we have to look at, what does that five-year plan look like? How much money do you need in this in July? How much money do you need between July and, you know, December? So those are things that we would have to do as we start to work on the budget. We have a budget calendar put together right now. On, when, on Monday, each department will be receiving their budget is level funded. With any, unless there's things that are contractual, those will automatically be part of things that you need, you know, money that you need to be able to do work and to provide the service in your department, supplemental requests or anything over that. So those are all things that we look at for all the departments, you know, and especially to allow you to be able to continue operations in the projects that you're working on.
So I think we, we want to make sure that, because we've got, we've got some other stuff on the agenda we want to make sure we get to. But two things, Plan Board members, if you have additional questions for Karen, please send them to me and I will get them to her and then we'll get those answered. And then I think, you know, again, the fundamental kind of thesis of all of this is really starting to think ahead about what do we want to do, what do we want to spend money on? And then, you know, Karen is there to kind of help us kind of strategize how that happens. And so, you know, I know that, that conversation started, you know, last week. You know, let's continue to kind of think about, you know, what projects we, we see ourselves kind of engaging in in fiscal 23. And then, you know, even, you know, beyond that into fiscal, you know. You know, planning is tough, you know, that far out, but it's not that far in, in, in reality. So Karen, thanks so much for taking the time, this is all very helpful. I, I, I'm married to an accountant, but it just like is. I, I, I'm married to an accountant, but it just like is. You know, it's always good to have you hold my hand and talk to us like I'm a small child. So thank you for that. And like I said, if you guys have questions for, for Karen, please feel free to send them along to me.
And, and if you need, if you need to call me, if you have any questions, my open door policy, I'm always available to answer questions or if you need anything, you know, any additional clarity on things.
Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
You too. Good night.
Okay. Bye-bye. Okay. All right. So our next agenda item is the, we are, we need to reopen our deliberations for four forty Granite Ave. And so this is a bit of a mind bender. I'm sure you, my fellow planning board members have realized that as we go through notes preparing for our meeting tonight. So normally, the ZBA goes first or kind of concurrently with us. But because of the pandemic, it, this site plan approval came to the planning board first. And the ZBA hasn't waited at all, which is very unusual. So we have a project in front of us that we don't know which variances they will get before the ZBA. So the exercise before us is to sort of assume if, if they were to get all of the variances approved by the zoning board, what conditions would we as a planning board recommend? So we're being asked to weigh in with conditions. And I got Marion's site plan approval document. I thought that was rather helpful to kind of understand that that's what happens at the end of the ZBA process. But within that document, she had the six points that Tim had provided to us under number two. And that is Tim's guidance to us is to, to sort of focus on those six. And Kevin Frytag's, you know, guidance is for us to sort of focus on those six items and think through conditions. I'm assuming we would like to approve with conditions as opposed to just outright approving. So do, are we, do we have consensus on that or do we need to vote on that? There's, there's also, we could also walk all the way through and find some issues and then we could vote at the end. Approve or deny, or approve with conditions or deny. But is there anyone here who just wants to approve it outright or do we all want to agree to approve with conditions?
Well, I would think that we would need conditions.
Right.
At a very, at a very minimum, the, 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 the variances are granted. But I think, I'm sure there's other things that we want to address.
I would agree with you, but I just wanted to open that up. So everybody's on the same page. I'm just going to turn my phone off here. All right. So there's that. Okay. So Kevin Frytag's other guidance for us was to sort of look at the four corners of plan and then look at the six items. And then there's that last paragraph about the planning board's authority and the building permit context. And then for guidance, he suggested that we look at prior site plan approvals in Milton that are sim- similar. I mean, well, I mean, the only, well, we had, I pulled a few, but they're not, nothing's perfect. You know, the one thirty-one Elliott. But a site plan approval, thirty-six fifty Elliott was a site plan approval. And let's see, thirty-six Central Ave was a, I believe it was a special permit, but it is a similar project. And eighty-eight Wharf is mixed use. So we have, we have a couple of things we can look at if we run into questions. Okay, so Rich is going to join us probably within the next fifteen minutes. So.
Can I make a suggestion, Denny?
Yes.
If, if you want to start with something, if you don't mind, we can share a screen of the staff memo and just kind of run through. And I know Tim kind of gave an overview, but I think, you know, even for the members of the public who are watching, I think it was a thorough memo, kind of laying sort of some background. And then, as you said, sort of laying what we need to focus on. And that can help everybody, I think, board members as well as members of the public, guide our, our discussion, as you said. But with that, if you don't have it available, I can share. I do have it on, on my computer here.
I'm happy to, I, I mean, I think what would be helpful is to put up the six points, if we have the six points.
They're in the memo if you want.
Yeah. I mean.
It's in the, they have the points and then they also have the staff recommendations on each of the points, which I would, I, I mean, one of the things about having professional staff, I think, is that it, it's important to, to hear from them, in my view, you know, because they're the ones with the training. And so if we could, if it's page five, if you, if you have it around, and I can open it, as I said, on screen share, it's the recommendation and it goes through the, the six points and then what the, the planning staff has suggested relative to them. And then, you know, we can see whether board members agree with that or think that there's something that's missing.
I, I kind of thought if we, if we like went to number one, we would see what, you know, we would look at Tim's points, but we would also look at each of our points.
Sure.
And so, um, so number one is protection of adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on the site. So we have Tim's suggestions. We also had Marion had some points and then we each have some points. So I, I thought we could just jump right in.
All right. So do you want to like just go through like every person? So start with either yourself or a, a board member or I suggest start with Tim and then go through each person's comments on that particular point. Is that what you were anticipating?
That's what I was thinking.
Rich yet, so that's what you're concerned with?
Yeah. I guess we could catch Rich up when, once he gets here. He should be here in the next ten minutes, I think. So, so we could start with number one. Tim, did you want to speak to number one? And then we could each speak to number one?
Yeah. So protection of adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on the site. You have to think of uses in, in the zoning sense, which are kind of broad categories of, of use. Residential, multifamily residential, mixed use, commercial, industrial. You know, move down kind of the grain of, you know, are we talking about, you know, what type of commercial use? Is this a, is this a water dispensary? Is it a coffee shop? Is it a, you know, adult entertainment facility of some kind? Is it, you know, a flower shop? You know, so, so the, the, the judgment of, you know, what is a detrimental or offensive use? And then we can think of the classic cases of offensive uses, nuisance uses, you know, a stockyard, a tannery, a kind of auto body shop. So, you know, the, the, the uses that are proposed in this project is, is mixed use, commercial, multifamily residential. Our opinion is that these are not offensive uses. And, and I think the, that is belied by the history of planning documents that propose multifamily and mixed use residential in this district. So, you know, I, I, I think this particular point, you can kind of dispense with relatively quickly. You know, there are other elements of this project that people may have issues with. But I think given the history of planning in the town and in the, in the neighborhood, that, you know, mixed use, multifamily residential should not be considered to be.
Okay. I noticed, Tim, that Marion had, you know, we could talk about solid waste management systems here, but I didn't have any suggested conditions for that.
I'm not so sure that that's in the right place. As Tim mentioned, we're going to the uses. And so it seems to me that the, we certainly have things that we have talked about in terms of, you know, shielding and, you know, la, 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 but that's not, that's not the uses under the terms of the site plan review. So those are things that would go in other places.
You've got another condition further on, talking about refuse and solid waste and everything.
Okay. All right. So that one will go later. So I, I, because she had waste management systems, I had, I would love to put condition the alarm, if they had alarm systems, I would want a limitation on the sound level so as to minimize impact on a butters.
Can I just make a note on this one, Denny? It's actually, it's actually required for public safety in some instances when you have a parking facility and there's a garage door that's opening to warn pedestrians on the sidewalk that a vehicle could be exiting. And so we just want to make sure that that kind of, we're not hampering public safety that way in terms of what you just mentioned.
Yeah, I, I was more thinking of like alarm systems, like even car alarms or, you know, things, you know, noise pollution is more of what I was thinking of. Sometimes they have even, even fire alarm systems that go off constantly can, can have a real impact on neighbors if they're not in good order.
I don't think you can control that.
No, I know you can't stop them, but if, but if somebody has a broken fire alarm, it can drive you crazy.
I mean, I live in East Milton. I know what it sounds like to hear car alarms all over the neighborhood, but I don't think there's really anything that,
I think on the building code and the, the life safety issues that, that would come with that. I, they like them loud. They want them loud. Unfortunately for the, if it's a false alarm. But if it's not a false alarm, you do want them to be heard, right? So there's, there's definitely public safety that has to kind of, you know, take the lead here on those things.
I think, I think the, the way that this has been, and, and I remember, I'm, I'm thinking of kind of like the Thayer Nursery Special Department, for instance. And I think the way that this sort of thing has been dealt with in the past is, and you, you, we do this with lighting, for instance. You know, the, the minimum acceptable safe level according to regulations so that you're not unnecessarily jacking up an alarm beyond what the minimum safety kind of requirement is. I think, I think that's probably the best you can do by way of a condition.
Okay. But I don't even know if this is the right place for it. But, well, it would be a detrimental, so the minimum safe level. Okay. All right. And do we want to talk about screening here? The screening, because Marion put screening here.
I don't know why we, well, I guess I'm kind of curious. You know, I think that Marion's draft may have been sort of an adaptation of a, a, a different one that we've done. But if we think about this, just like, sometimes you're separating uses horizontally. Here the uses are, are vertical, right? And so, you know, you're not, so in other words, your business use and your residential use are not like in two different buildings or they're not, you know, you have a floor that separates them. The building code has requirements when you're separating uses in, within a building like that. So, I mean, I think here is the idea of the two uses, which the fact that it's currently business and currently has residential on it, it's, it's a continuation of the uses, different square footages and numbers of units, of course. But if those two uses are the, the same uses that exist on the property now.
Yeah, I mean, going, I think that the, going that, with the shielding, the noise and the light, the, you know, fumes and odors, the screening and all that sort of stuff, all that's going to go under, you know, either E, which is unit density and the proximity of adjacent buildings and sort of addressing how to soften that impact. And then under F, where you're talking about the adequacy of, you know, water, the sight of lighting and that sort of stuff. So, you know, I, this Marion's draft is really helpful, but I, I think, as I said, I'm going to Cheryl's point, I think it's grabbed from something else and not, not a project like this one.
Okay. So where you have E, I have number five. So, but, but I think, I think that, so you're calling E proper use of the site with respect to unit density. Okay, I got your logic.
I'm not a numbers person, although I'm passionate about absolutely everything these days. But no, I, I sort of was looking at Tim's memo and going by the letters.
That's totally fine. Yep. That makes sense. Okay. So, and then I have lighting. It's number six. Okay.
This is a quick FYI. I did, I just opened up my email since I sat down. I did get a, and I just forwarded along to all of you, a draft of some additional conditions that Marion passed along, that you may want to look at as you're going through these. They're just kind of in number order, so they're not necessarily broken down by the, the, the six conditions for approval. But yeah, that, that just came in late in the day. So I just passed that along.
So that's in, that's in our email box right now?
Yep.
Yes.
So just to, can, to Kathleen's point, if I'm, if I may, Denny, on the where something might go, I'm looking at Marion's and, and Tim's at the same time now. And if the unit density and, and the impact, so unit density would definitely fall under E, we're five, I guess. And, you know, we, we talk about shadow and noise. So I think, I do think these, these all can be addressed in other, these points or topic or categories of conditions.
So to shorten this, I would say that under number one or A, that we don't have any conditions we would impose under tho- that particular bullet. And then the next one would be the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movements within the site in relation to streets and properties. And that's where we would be putting in the things that we talked about, like pedestrian ramps, you know, construction in accordance with the parking plan, you know, that sort of stuff. Just.
Yep. I, I, I think you're ready. Thanks. So Tim, do you want to talk to us about your proposed conditions?
Sorry. I didn't know if we were going in each taking turns talking about this, so I was waiting and I wasn't commenting on number one.
I'm so sorry.
That's why I just raised my hand.
Yeah, please.
So one, and I, again, looking at a lot of other recent mixed use, you know, approvals and permits. The one thing that I, in the protection of adjoining premises, is, is setbacks. And I think it, setbacks does fall into this. This has no, virtually no setback at all on it, on the site as currently proposed. I would like to see more of a setback, as you see it thirty-six Central, as you see it on Elliott Street, on any of our, you know, our mixed use that we've recently done. I think there, that is protection and, and being detrimental, you know, in its use. It's not that, you know, we're anticipating this to be, you know, we don't know. But, but with a high level of density in an already dense area, I think there should be, and being so, and this is, this is actually very different from our other mixed use projects in its proximity to a residential neighborhood. We are, this is literally next door. And while there is a setback and there's sort of that alley where the four parking places are, I think there should be a further setback from street scape on, on all sides. So I would, I would like to.
I would just, and one thing to comment on that, Meredith, if I may. Most of this site is in the business district, but does not have any setback requirements except for rear yard. And how, you know, if we, so I just want to point that out because most of this is not in the residential district. And so what would be allowed currently on this site? And so what would be allowed currently on this site, I think is something we should bear in mind, that, you know, because, the reason for that in the business districts is oftentimes you want the active pedestrian, connection between your storefronts, you know, and the sidewalk. And that the further you set it back, the more challenges that that creates for the viability of the business. The other thing I wanted to say is this triangle shaped parcel is really challenging architecturally. And I think you, you need to, we need to consider that in terms of an all around, setback requirement for all sides, because you get to a point where it makes it, very difficult to make things work, to make parking work, to make, you know, unit layout work in efficient ways. So I, I do think we need to think of it more, if, if you have concerns about a particular location, think of that, a little bit more surgically, if you will, than broadly.
So 36 Central is, that is a mixed use, that's a perfect example of how you have a really inviting, you're inviting people into your commercial spaces in a really welcoming way, but you're connecting it with a residential, a design, and, and that is what you're incorporating, and I, and that does have a, a setback. And it has green space, which I think I ultimately want to see on this site, is additional green space. And, and I know that, you know, that there's trees planted, but that there is some sort of green buffer. Because right now, that's a concrete, that whole strip has just been paved over, and I, it, it really would be, and it would be more consistent with our mixed use, and mixed use in other, you know, that we have had. And this is not just a business use, this is now a residential use, and I think, as in, on Elliot Street, and we can get into, you know, density and the, and the problems with, you know, with density, that don't, that is, the current density is not allowing there to be any sort of setback, which, which I, I do believe is, would be, would be desirable for this project.
I don't see how I can impose a setback on, in a project that doesn't have, the commercial district doesn't require it.
Because it's not a commercial use. It's, we're not making it mixed use.
Right, for the public good aspect of granting a mixed use variance, you know, I, I would have too hoped that there would be more space around the buildings, because the setbacks are no longer for business. Now you have stories above that are residential.
On the expressway.
I, I think, I think one thing to keep in mind about this point, and, and Meredith, I 100% kind of, I, I, I love 36 Central, I think it's one of the best things we've done. That was a special permit project, and, and so those dimensional requirements were sort of created, you know, via PUD zoning. This is, the only, they actually comply with all of the setback requirements in the business district, except for the one, right side setback, which, the variance for, because of the upper story setbacks. Everything else meets the zoning requirement, so you, you, you've got to always try to keep in mind, you know, the difference between, a special permit, which is, you know, highly discretionary, a lot of latitude for the permit granting authority, propose different conditions, you know, that, that PUD zoning set up certain dimensional requirements, versus a site plan approval where, you know, in the instances where they are complying with zoning, the site plan approval can't create more onerous conditions than the zoning does. So to the extent that there is a variance being sought for setbacks, it's on the, the right side facing Mechanic Street. Oh, I think that's what, when, when Cheryl uses the term kind of surgical kind of focus, I think that's kind of what she's referring to, like, where is, where's the variance, and how can the project be conditioned to accommodate that variance? The other thing that I would say is, you know, the, the variance is what makes the thing kind of zoning, compliant is the wrong word, but it's, it's where, it's where it gets its relief. As we've kind of said at a lot of steps in this process, you know, ideally you would have the variances in your hands before you considered the, the site plan approval. We're not in that situation, so what I would say is as a practical matter, if, if that right setback, was able to be extended to compliance, it would have been, it would have been done already. And so I, I would maybe try to think about what is the, what is the impact that that variance is producing? And are there alternative means of conditioning the project to kind of mitigate that? Just, just a couple of ways of thinking about it.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted to understand. We're not, I mean, this is shifting to mixed use as opposed to business use. So if you, you know, like the Barrett Workshop sort of suggested that if you go higher and you go mixed used, you can get more out of the space than just like box-like buildings, you know, filling out the space because you're changing the use. So the, the whole goal was to get a better, like, pedestrian experience. And, and we do get a better pedestrian experience when you're crossing mechanics, so that's good. You have the, the, you know, the handicap and all that's, you know, the, the, all that stuff, so. But, you know, along the sides, like, I would have liked to have seen, along the arborvitae, you know, the business, I, I don't know if we could show a visual, but on the side, that's kind of like diagonally, you have the row of arborvitae. I, I was hoping we could sort of, like, even walk along that. I don't know if there's any room for that, or anything green, like, even, even a green walking path or something.
So you're talking, Denny, about the space between, the building and the adjacent properties, not one of the streets, faces of the part of the triangle?
Right, right, the, the, I think it's the bank on the side, so on that side, all the way to the mechanic street. When we were doing the site walk, there, I, I thought there was potential for that, maybe. I don't, I don't know.
You have the plant, Tim? If not, I may have it here.
I, 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 I have it, I can, I can share my screen, I just have to do a little.
As you pull that up, I, I did want to just elaborate, I, I think that, I, I think I'm in agreement with Meredith that, you know, that the site lacks any meaningful open space. And, you know, I understand it's difficult, because the developer tried with the pocket park, but there was such a public outcry for more parking, that we lost, we lost that little pocket park. But, but now we kind of have nothing except for the, you know, the planter on the corner, with, you know, it'd be a bench, I guess. But that's kind of like right on, on the highway, so. But it's something, I'll take it because it's something, but we, we don't have much.
Sorry, Denny. No, 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 you go.
So that, that, that was my point, go ahead.
So the, the, the thing, so this is the, the engineering plan, and this is, this is the sort of, right side setback that is kind of referred to, in, in the requested variances section of the, I'm just going to zoom in a little bit. So what, what the variance is for is, we're looking, this is the ground level, I think this is the ground level. Let me just make sure that it is, sorry.
Same with the ground level.
So, so you can see this, this mark here, so six foot side yard setback required, okay? So that's, this is the sort of the face of the building at the sidewalk, and here's your, your six foot sort of setback, right? What this, what this dash line is, is, floors two to five, is the building is overhanging this setback. So at the ground level, the setback is there, at the over levels, the setback is there. So again, you know, you sort of need to, you know, if this was just a, flat building, then we'd be saying like, okay, there are impacts on pedestrian realm, and then there are impacts on, you know, height of the building goes up and it extends beyond where it's usually meant to extend, and so there's a visible impact elsewhere. In, in this particular case, with this particular design, that impact on the pedestrian realm is, is not necessarily there, because it meets the setback requirements, it's above. And, and so you, so I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, you, you sort of need to think critically about what is the impact of that encroachment over the setback line, above the pedestrian plane, and, and how could that potentially be mitigated?
But we're also not giving a variance for the setbacks, that's, they have to apply to the zoning board for that, so. And I'm not quite sure why, if we say that our site plan approval, which is all we're doing, not a special permit, it's site plan approval, and all we're doing is approving that site plan, and it's subject to the zoning relief that they get from the planning, from the zoning board, I don't know why we would even be saying anything more than you need the conditions, you know, you need variances from the zoning board.
Okay, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I was, I think I'm actually agreeing with you, that we, I, I think we can condition more than what the zoning board is doing as far as variances, but, so.
Well, I didn't get to square one without a variance from the zoning board, so I don't know why we would be tying ourselves up into a twist, you know, over something that we don't even know they're going to get.
Well, that would be the first condition we would have, is that it would be subject to approvals of variances from the zoning board of appeal, right? And the variances include the setback and include the use, right? But, you know, to the point of whether it has impact, other impacts, I guess is what folks are trying to get at, is that right?
Well, when.
Three feet, isn't it, I'm sorry, Denny, go ahead.
So the, the, the overhang, the, the only concern I had with the overhang was, the engineer had said something about concerned about, if the water drips off the overhang onto the park, onto the sidewalk, you know, what, what kind of impact would that have on the citizens walking by?
So one thing I would say to that, Denny, it's not really an overhang in the sense of like a canopy, it's the whole building up above. And so they're, they have to deal with their water at the, at the roof level up above, when it's not going to come down to the sidewalk here, because it's got to be captured at the roof level with their roof drains, is the way they're doing it, I believe. So it's, it's definitely different than if you had a canopy where it's draining off of the canopy onto the sidewalk, which I do as a no-no, also, because it just freezes, you know, and it, that's definitely a hazard. But I don't see that here, because, you know, you think about some of the most beautiful buildings downtown, and I, you know, my office was, near one, when anytime you had snow and ice, you had cones on the sidewalk, because a lot of those things that project out from the building, you know, when the snow started to melt, and then the icicles are coming down, and they were, the icicles are falling on the sidewalk. But here, you know, this, this design actually is not set up to, to create that kind of a condition, you know, so, by having this facade design, which, you know, we could go back to if you want, the way I see it, it's not setting up a condition to create that kind of hazard on the sidewalk.
And Tim, do you recall if the engineer got her concerns resolved about that too?
Are you talking about Marina Fernandez, the town engineer? So she, she submitted a letter, giving the thumbs up to.
Okay, so she got that concern, I, I remember she had raised that, and so.
But, okay, so. Just one last thing I was going to also mention is, I, this is going back to the balconies, which I, I understand is desirable, for the residents that live in the units, but for the, for the neighbors and the butters, having, having balconies, and not only just balconies, but glass balconies, it gives you a visual, you are now allowing people to literally be sitting out on their balcony, looking down at somebody who may be sunbathing in their backyard, that they no longer have, I mean, or doing something in their yard, which is, to me, a bit of an invasion of privacy of the people who don't currently have that, that now they're going to be sitting there, and they're going to be having, you know, they're going to have people sitting, you're going to sit on their balcony, if you have a balcony, you are going to want to sit outside. And, you know, you're, you're limited in what people are going to be putting out there on their balconies, I know, it can vary, and, and the condo docs will have to address that. But I do drive by and I do see, Cheryl recently did a building, on Adam Street, and I drove by, it has the glass balconies, very similar, actually has the same windows too, similar windows. But I drove by, and people are starting to put all different, you know, their, their furnishings out there, and, you know, it just, it's, 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 not that you don't want people to have use or have fresh air and be able to open, you know, your balconies, that's why I'd, mentioned the Juliet balconies, because I think it's a nice way to open, have fresh air. But that you don't have, now people, the residents around, are now, looking at furnishings, looking at whatever people want to put out on their, on their balconies, because it's, it is glass, and so you do, you do see it. And there is, there's a lack of privacy, I think, for the, for the neighboring residents, having outdoor balconies, so, that I would, I would be concerned about if I was a neighbor and, and there were outdoor, you know, balconies that people were sitting out on, and.
Do you have a visual, Tim, do you have a visual, so we could kind of see the, the, building in relation to the neighborhood, to the neighbors, I'm just trying to.
One thing, while he's pulling that up, I would say.
I'm going to stop my share for a minute, bring up a more recent render.
Okay, thank you, Tim, I appreciate that.
Sorry, Denny. One thing I would just say is, I, of all the neighbor comments that we received, I, I don't recall, receiving any relative to the balconies. And I, I'll just point out again that in the era of COVID, and the interest in, public health, outdoor space for residential units is, is highly desirable, and beneficial. And even, not in the times of COVID, you know, for people to be able to step outside, if they're working from home and they can sit outside for a moment, enjoy the sunshine, that's a, a big improvement, you know, to the, the quality of life that they, that they can have. And so, you know, open space is a requirement, in places that we work, open space is a requirement for residential units, and balconies can serve that, can meet that requirement, and they see them as being beneficial. The other, you know, other way for it to be done is to have a common roof deck. And often, and neighbors are get concerned about common roof decks, because they, they can view them as having sort of larger groups of people, that might generate more noise. So, these are pretty, pretty far back. And they're facing front yards for the most part, on people opposite side of the street, rather than backyards.
I, I, I just don't think that, you know, balconies and lots of, I mean, I, I have a third floor, I can look out my windows and into the yard of the people next to me, I get to see all their kids' toys. I don't think there's a, there's a guarantee that, you know, I, I know we all think everyone's, you know, house is their castle, but I think there's wolves on that, but.
Okay, so. Is there, is there, is there another visual with any other balconies, because I don't know that this.
There aren't any balconies on the front, because. That's not really the fresh air you want to get.
I wouldn't call it fresh air on that side.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
That looks like it in terms of the renderings, I can try to find an elevation set of diagrams if, I'll, I'll poke around and try to find that.
Okay, all right, well, those visuals were helpful. Okay, all right, so Meredith, so balconies, and then, did you, did you have any other thoughts on setback anywhere else in the site?
I mean, I, I was really hoping to see some, some green space on the, really on the streets on the granite side. And that, that was a more of, what would be just an improvement to that, to that area, to that location, and an improvement to the site overall is to have, some sort of green buffer, when you come off the expressway, which buffers the residential, and it's, in a way, it's, it would be actually good for the residents who would live there to have some sort of green, a little bit more of a buffer between, the highway and, and between, and the Granite Avenue, which is high traffic, to, to buffer that.
Between the sidewalk and the building, like a strip of garden?
I mean, that's a, yeah, that's a tough, that's a tough street. I just don't see, Meredith, that, that any green strip. I just don't see Meredith that, that any green strip would survive. They've agreed to put in trees. And I think the biggest thing that they've agreed to, which we, you know, we, we certainly would encourage, is getting the utility poles out of the way. You know, because those, and that's expensive. That's not.
And I would add that, I just would add that there's only so much that we can expect of a, of a private development to do to fix larger issues. I would love to see one, that a road diet there, one lane removed, green space put in and have a greater buffer to the highway for sure. But I don't see that be a, a requirement of the private property owners, because these lots are so small already. And, um, I, I could really see that as sort of a municipal kind of, or really, I don't know if that's state or federal because of the highway there. But, you know, I would love to advocate that the state or the, or the feds do something better along that strip for sure. Um, I, I just have concerns about having the private property owners there do it.
Tim.
And I. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I wanted to see how, how big that sidewalk was on the plan, how big the sidewalk was from the building to the curb. Would you mind helping us look on the plan?
I'll find it.
They're saying that they're gonna widen it to 10 feet, um, but I do have a question regarding Cheryl. I don't know that they can guarantee it can be widened, because if it is a state, um, or if it's federally, a private, a private owner may not be able to.
It's not a state highway. We had that question, I think, before, where that came up in the hearing about whether it was a state highway in that section, because there was a question about whether they could do a loading area. And I think the answer to that question was that no, in that section, it is not a state highway.
Oh, all right.
The widening of the sidewalk wouldn't be into the right of way, it would be.
Back into the lane, back into the puzzle.
Yeah, so then if it's, if it's not a state highway, sorry, go ahead, Denny.
No, I'm sorry. Um, I, I couldn't hear what Tim said. Tim said the, Tim, could you repeat what you said?
Yeah, so if the, if the sidewalk's gonna be widened, it wouldn't be into the right of way by moving the curb. It would be essentially stepping the building back beyond the property line, um, to create more sidewalk on the, on the stuff.
Right, that's why they're stepping. That's why they're stepping the first floor in and then having the building come back out of, uh, is to get that widened sidewalk without losing all of the space vertically.
Okay, so I'll just put a pin in this for now, but, but so there's no room to add like just a strip of, of, uh, grass, because the sidewalk's already too small. It's already, it's only.
Yeah, and I said, Denny, really.
Or is it?
You're a member of the garden, you guys are members of the garden club, but, um, uh, you know, seriously, I, I, I wouldn't see that a grass, I mean, that a green space there would survive. I walk on that street all the time.
And one thing I suggested early on was, uh, maybe the loss of a parking space and taking that depth of 20 feet and dividing it into a couple of places that you could have green space come out into the parking zone, which is, um, something that, you know, people didn't, weren't really supportive of losing a parking space. So, you know, there are trade-offs that, um, you saw down the street. Public safety, a lot of people were unhappy about losing parking spaces that were really kind of unsafe intersection, unsafe intersection. You know, so, um, the one thing about having a continuous line of parking spaces, it does facilitate parallel parking. But this isn't the easiest place, uh, place to parallel park either. So, it, but, you know, I really think that, um, I could applaud a developer who's willing to put in a high-quality project on this kind of a site. Because, uh, every time I've walked this part of Milton, it's, it's a really tough spot. It's a really, um, the highway there makes it really, really tough. And, um, I think this would be transformative along here. Um, and, and really, um, hopefully kinda set a different tone for what this can be along the highway. I mean, another place I kinda think of where it's remarkable to me that there's, um, so much building. But even in Boston, in the South End section where they're building right next to the highway, and there's a lot of people who live there. So, it's not, it's because of the location that's desirable in other ways. We've talked about this. It's a walkable area. And that's in demand, you know, there are people who, um, don't wanna have to be in their car to do every errand that they need to do. So, I mean, um.
I, I just noticed, I, I was at a site that's being built in Westwood and I was walking by. They have a strip of just, they, they have a garden in just along the front. And I, when I walked the site, I know it, I know what Kathleen's saying, you're right beside a highway and it's really tough. But if you were to just put even a strip, um, and then they could put whatever plant life they would, I mean, they could put shrubs, they could put anything. It would make a huge difference, um, for the pedestrians and for the people who live there. And I know it, I, I, I can't imagine it costs much more than sidewalk. I mean, just a strip to put.
What idea, Denny, as a compromise, cause I, I just don't, I, I think it makes sense to put in grass or or dirt strip. What if we said that in our site plan approval, we would wanna see, you know, planters of a certain size put on the sidewalk? So, it's paved, cause that makes it easier to shovel and keep clear and all that sort of stuff. Um, if you have a sidewalk and then you gotta strip a dirt with plants and then the building, that's kind of a problem to keep the sidewalks clean and you dump salt on it and it kills all the plants. But if you said, why, why couldn't you have require, you know, cement planters of.
Those are already on there. Those are already on the plant.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, so, so we could have more or you could, you know, but, but I think, I think that, you know, of the, for the practicality of keeping the sidewalk available to be used in bad weather, um, you know, the, the planters would make more sense than saying, you know, dirt strip in between the facade of the building and the sidewalk. And that would achieve what you'd like to achieve, which is breaking up the space and making it look less concrete by having, you know, softer, you know, bushes and stuff like that, but in, in planters so that they're easier to manage.
I mean, the advantage of the planters too is that you can change them out seasonally, which is, um, I've, I've seen that done a lot. And, you know, having them, uh, plants actually elevated above that snow line, it's actually allows them to appear nicer all year long. You know, you can, I, I, I think I mentioned before near my office where it is now, which is in the South End. There are some buildings that have this kind of planters where they change them out seasonally. And they're really beautiful and I love walking by those storefronts. So, I think that, I, I mentioned that early on when, when these planters got added. And just recently, I took another photo of them because I, they look so nice again for the holidays. So, that's the advantage of the planters, I think. And, you know, if things don't hold up well, they can swap them out, you know, um, easily.
All right, Tim, are you still there? I'm not sure if you might have stepped away.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, great. Um, could you zoom in on the plan along the, um, the strip of Arbor Vitae's? I think it's between like the bank and it goes to Mechanic Street. I don't know, I, I didn't know how much space there was. I think there might only be space enough for Arbor Vitae's, but I just wanted to double check.
All right, give me, give me a second.
Okay, thank you for, for doing that. Um, well, um, I'm open to more planters if, um, let's, uh, Meredith, did you have any more thoughts on the? Okay, maybe more planters. Do we know how many planters they have on the plan?
Denny, is this, is this portion that you're talking about?
I think so.
You, um, Tim, do you have the, um, the memo that Marion had provided for the, the hearing that the last meeting we had on this, because it did some landscape plan associated with it? Or a first floor plan with, which has landscaping?
You see.
There we go.
Okay. That's the one. That's a good one. Okay, so the dotted line on the left part of the triangle? Yeah, there's just a number for Arbor Vitae's. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, um, the, the Arbor Vitae's in that location was the screening for that neighbor. And then, you know, they're trying to maximize what they can do with the parking. That's what's constrained that location. If we didn't have the parking, you could still have a screening and a walkway connection.
Right, right.
Which I view as more attractive long-term. It's not that you couldn't, if, it, maybe if you found that you didn't need those parking spaces, uh, you could come back and change it, put a little pocket park in there. That would be desirable in my mind, but, um, I think there was a lot of concern about the number of parking spaces. So, I, I think out of the blocks, it probably makes sense to keep this plan this way.
Okay. All right, well, I, I, I don't know, Meredith, do you see any more room for planters? They can be pretty narrow along.
Well, now that they've widened the sidewalk to, to 10 feet, it doesn't have to be necessarily just in those two recessed locations. It could be, you know.
You could do.
Multiple.
Okay.
And they can be long, they can be narrow, they don't have to be round, you know, they could be, you often see them.
Okay.
More linear.
Kathleen, do you wanna suggest a condition for more, for more planters?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think to a certain extent, you know, I'd, I'd like to, the, maybe the idea of the planters, I think, is a, is a good one. You've got, yeah, they've got those two tucked into those indents. As I said, the only worried I'd have is that, you know, you wanna make sure that, you know, the sidewalk's still safe and usable and all that sort of stuff. You know, then, and then you're not impeding access for handicapped, you know, people with wheelchairs and walkers and all that sort of stuff.
They do have that zone between the curb and the sidewalk. It's, I think, called those brick here.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a couple of benches. I mean, you could add some planters in that zone. And it gives you a more buffer for the pedestrian on the, you know, as you're walking along there between the parked cars, the, and the roadway in the building, which would probably be a better spot for them.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, all right.
We would have a condition that would, you know, request, you know, you know, um, planters of, you know, sufficient size and, um.
I mean, you could say something like, if you just look at, say, hey, you can't block all pedestrian access between the curb and the sidewalk, right? So, if you said, okay, there was a planter between each one of those trees.
Yeah.
Say, you said, you know, eight of them and, you know, six to eight, you know, it looks to me like six to eight would work. And, you know, right, you don't want them puny, but you kinda leave it a little bit up to the landscape architects figure out the right size, uh, but.
Okay, all right. Okay, six to eight planters, um.
On the brick segment of the sidewalk.
On the brick segment of sidewalk. Okay, well, we have our first condition under number one. Okay. All right.
You could put them on Mechanic Street as well, if you wanted to provide a little bit more.
Yeah.
Green view from across the street.
So, we could do one, two, three, four. Yeah, three or four.
Two to four, you know, to see what you could fit reasonably.
And two to four on Mechanic Street.
Two to four?
Yep.
Okay. I just was making notes, that's all.
No, that's good. Thank you. I'm glad you are.
Do you wanna have the condition be, um, uh, location and style or whatever approved by the planning director? Just so we get a little bit of a, I mean, not that I'm sitting here dying to approve planters, but, um, you know, without having kind of specific size and locations and everything, we wanna have just a little bit of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that.
I was kidding. I am dying to approve planters, so.
Yeah.
It sounds, it sounds trivial, but they did make a big difference.
They do. They really do. People love them. They're hard to water, though. I feel bad for the person. That would be like me and Meredith. Okay, okay, um.
Maybe one of the, one of the condo owners would just lean out the window every once in a while and throw some over at it, but yeah.
Well, if they're the right plantings.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they do the right plantings and if they could do some perennials, it could make, it could actually really make a difference, um, all year. In this area, I did wanna talk about the shadow effect. I did go back and look at the tape. And I.
So, what are we, so what are we doing? The shadow effect is under, well, under number one?
Yeah, number one, um, protection of adjoining premises. You know, I, I, I am concerned that they are losing some sunlight. It was just hard, um, to sort of demonstrate that on the, um, what they showed was that there are a lot of shadows there as, as it is in the existing state. And then you do get more shadow at four stories and you get even more shadow at five stories. You kind of, so I, I did, I, I do think that that is an impact on the neighbors. But I don't, I don't have, you know, a, a, a great condition or a great solution. But I do see that that, it does have an impact on the plant life and, and the, and the neighbors' yards. It, less, less things are gonna be able to grow there. And, um, you know, shade plants are so few in comparison to plants that even have a little bit of sun, um, that.
And wasn't it, was it mostly in the winter, though? I don't remember if it had a summer impact. It's like spring, summer, fall would be your prime growing season, right? So, I, I don't. Impact for those.
Yeah, I, we, I should have asked for a peer review because, especially when it was north was south and south was north and this and that. But things were going so fast, I didn't, um, so I, I don't have a, a condition. I wish I could, um, come up with a condition. I, I, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, I, I just, I can't think of, I can't think of a condition that, I mean, when I went to the Neighborhood Association meeting, you know, they, people said they complained about the parking, but they complained about the parking throughout East Milton. It wasn't just the site. And that went on for a while. And then, you know, there was like, well, take a floor off. And that was, and so, and Michael, the developers, said, no, he couldn't. It just wouldn't work. Um, it doesn't, the numbers don't work. So, I don't think there's anything, I mean, I think that goes to whether or not you wanna vote for the site plan or not. Um, it's kind of a fundamental issue that I don't think can be addressed by a condition.
So, here's something that I would say is, you know, by putting the volume of the building where they have, I think they've made the impact as less as it can be, I guess, is what, to say it. Because if you took what the, you know, the, that volume and put it within the height limits that are allowed, you know, that it might have more impact, um, even on more people, right? By moving it further away and going higher with it, it cut, it, it, we, it shifts the impact over to a smaller area. That's what I anticipate. So, um, I think we just have to be mindful that they made design decisions before they came to us to reduce impacts. And, you know, this developer, unlike some, didn't come to us with something that they said, that they intentionally, um, overbuilt to have room to bring it down, right? So, because they wanted to say that they are responsible developers who come to us with a project that works. And so, you know, that's the thing about saying, we'll take a floor off. That doesn't work when you have that kind of approach. And I've seen this, you know, in my career a lot, where there's like this skepticism about whether, when a developer comes in, that they're coming in with a project that's financeable or they're coming in to play that sort of game of, I can, I can reduce it. So, this developer has told us that they didn't do that. It's in, it's in Marion's most recent, um, memo also. And, um, and knowing what I know about construction classes these days, and the kind of site that they've got here, I can believe that it's not viable to take that floor off. So, then the question is, have, have they designed it in the way that's least impactful, right? Have they taken the. Have they taken the volume of building that they say they need in order to make their numbers work? And put it on the site in a way that's least impactful? So what they, strategies they told us they did was they put the greatest volume towards Granite Ave to bring it away from mechanic street. And to keep the bulk of the building in the business district where that height is allowed. And by doing that, they haven't used all of the volume or the heights that they have on the full triangle, right? So they say, okay, instead of taking a footprint and just going up to this volume, you can say, I'm doing that, right? So then, because I've done that, I need a variance to go up over here. But I'm doing that because it's going to lessen the impacts for those around me. So they made those decisions. They kind of, they tried to explain how they went through that analysis before they came to us. And sometimes that can be hard to do, hard to explain, hard to understand. That's the way I see it, is that they, they've addressed a lot of the things that they anticipated. Because they were doing their design work ahead of time. They were anticipating the things that would be challenging.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I, I hear what you're saying, but like, if you were to, if you were to like, let's say it's like that. If you were to like lower it like this, you might have less shadow effect on the neighbors that came in and told us. That they have skylights and they're worried about losing their sun and their solar power and so on and so forth. That, you know, they might be better off with something more like that, that, that didn't require a variance. And I don't. So I just, I think there, there could be a solar power argument and, uh. And I, I do think that there very well could be a real. You know, detrimental. Impact on those neighbors losing their sunlight.
Well, do we want to bring the shadow study back up? Because I think it's. If you're worried about that, we, you know, um, we can look at those differences.
Why don't we, why don't we make the condition subject to a peer review?
I, I think it's facts. I mean, I don't know why we would spend the money on a peer review for the shadow study. I mean, it's like, you know, the, the sun's where it is.
It, it goes to density, which I think we, we'll be addressing later too. It's.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's as good as Cheryl is saying, you know, it's sort of goes to see whether or not you want the project or not. And so to a certain extent. You know, if we're going to be putting in a bunch of conditions and the answer to the question at the end is, are you going to vote for the permit and you still say no? It's kind of like, well, why do we do all this stuff for these, these conditions if in the end you don't like the project and you're not going to vote for it?
Or it goes to ZBA and they don't give them a variance and they can't do it unless they have every single variance. I mean. We might have just spent a whole year on this and it goes to ZBA and who knows what happens, do you know what I mean? We did an exercise, whether we like it or not, we're all here.
No, no, but I was just saying, it's sort of saying is that, you know, we're, we're thinking about putting in conditions that the, the developer can't make, can't meet.
So if you look, can we just look at the shadow for a moment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So if you look at this, it says December, uh, nine AM, right? And the shadows are long in December. Um, I've run these shadow analyses myself. Using the same software that they've used. It's geolocated, as long as they've got it geolocated accurately, which I think they said they had a mistake initially, but they've corrected. The shadows are cast by the software. It's. If, as long as your input of your height and your geolocation are correct, the shadows are going to be accurate. And it's relied upon by all. The design professionals and it's accepted. I, I know in every place that I've worked, and it's mostly in Boston that I work, but a lot of, but, uh, some other surrounding communities as well. Uh, but if you look at that, um, then you go to the next one, Tim.
Rich has his hand up, Jenny. He must be.
Oh, Rich, Rich is here. Hey, Rich, I was just going to say we should wait for Rich because Rich, Rich is in this world. Hello, Rich.
Yes, hello.
Hi. Hi. Thanks for joining us. We're, you, you got here just in time. We're talking about the, um, solar. The sun effect, um. I don't know, um. I was. Go ahead.
So we're right now, the shadow at, at nine AM is all on the commercial property next door with exception of a corner of the property right next door. And then, but, and I kind of agree, just remember again that the height that's allowed in this area. Is, um, three stories and forty-five feet, I think it is. So a four-story building is forty-five feet. And so like the zoning would allow for this height at the teal color, right? So then you go to the red at nine AM, you still don't have any increase because the shadow that you're getting increased is all going towards, uh, Granite Ave because of the angle of sun. So then you go to the next, keep going. And because of the path of the sun's going towards our left, shadows starting to shift. So they're already with the existing structures passing shadows next door. And there would be here, but it's not on the building right now. It's on the ground. So you can see because the rooftops are still white, that the shadows are on the ground and not the rooftop. And then. Here, uh, that you can see some of the red that goes onto a small portion of the building there. But. This one, that is just the adjacent property, one adjacent property is getting a slight increase. Other property next to that, which I think is the homeowner that we've heard from, is not seeing additional. Impactful at twelve o'clock, that's twelve o'clock there. And then you go to three o'clock in the winter.
Oh, Rich, you might want to mute your, um, phone. We're getting a.
So everything's pretty much already in shadow there by three o'clock. You can't really count. I mean, yeah, you might get a little bit more here, but.
So the purple is existing. The purple is existing now.
The room has had sunset, you know, at this time of year, right? It's dark, almost, it's darker four o'clockish, right? So three o'clock is pretty, pretty close to dark already. So then. I was just going to say it's worthwhile looking at spring and summer, because they're pretty much the same, pretty similar. I don't know, Tim, if you can grab those if you found handy because.
What, what time is this one that we're looking at?
This is three o'clock.
This is three o'clock because see like. There's, so there was some sun for some of these people, but now it's gone. Does it go later?
Yeah.
The teal, the teal means that they, they had some sun. Now it's gone. Not saying a lot, but they had some.
Right. And then here, it's on the rooftop. I mean, you can see it on the rooftops here. This is again, kind of where. You know, if you say three o'clock, you know, you could do something where you run something that you saw twelve and you saw three. If you think about seeing the three in the winter, it's a lot different than seeing three in the summer or even three in spring and fall. So because we're so close to dark, I mean. I, I don't really think three in the winter is as helpful to look at myself, to really think about. I think looking in the fall, a spring and fall is, get a better idea of the impacts because summer the sun's high, right? Then you know you're going to have the least impacts. And, you know, winter. Excuse me, the sun's the lowest, so you're going to get these early morning and late afternoon impacts. Uh, just because of the, see, where the sun is located in the sky. So Tim, are you able to pull up that? Uh, we did have a full one. I think this came later.
Was, was the, was the full one, the one with the? The incorrect geolocation? I mean, I think, I think the, 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 the theory behind providing the, the December, um, ones is that. The shadows are going to be shorter a, at every point. And, and at any other time of year. This is like literally the worst. You know, Cheryl, understanding, understanding your point about, you know, three o'clock at December is different than three o'clock in March. Um, but just from a pure kind of, you know, length of shadow and coverage of shadow, um, this is the worst it gets.
Okay, so Tim, can you go back up? I think early on, or this slide, we had something for March.
Okay, well, well, you'll accept that. Rich, did you want to add anything? I noticed your hand is up. I didn't know if you had any thoughts on the, um, sunlight matter. And solar.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Rich.
I'm sorry. No, I had it up, um, to get in the room. I just haven't put it down yet because I'm in a car. And I don't want to look down, so.
That's fine. Okay.
So I think this demonstrates the point I was trying to make. If you look at the top, it's the December, nine, twelve and three PM. And then, uh, the bottom row is March. So look at the difference between how long that shadow is. Uh, at those times of day between December and March.
Okay.
And that gets better. All the way up. And it'll look again like this in September, from my experience running these. That's what you'll see. You'll see less shadow when the sun gets higher and higher in the sky. At these times of the day. Of course, you know, you're always going to get longer shadow. You know, closer to sunset. It's just a time difference. The time that that happens shifts later and later, right? So, um. So I would say like, if you think about growing seasons. You know, starting in what, April or May? You know, um, your growing season, I think in, in terms of the, these shadows is not going to be impacted. You know, except for, uh. Later in the afternoon.
Okay. All right, um. I'm ready to move on from the shadows. I, based on the information that we have, I. I, I can't really come up with a condition other than, you know, it would, it would help the shadow effect if, if there wasn't a fifth floor, but I can't. I can't condition the project on that, um, but I didn't know if Rich had a thought, um. Um, because he's in that business, that solar power well, but, um.
No, 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 I, I don't.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Well, I guess if, if, um, if the citizens had more thoughts, they could bring. New information or additional information to the ZBA and, and, and get a second opportunity to talk about that. I just, based on the information that I have. I just, I just can't really come up with a condition, although I, I am sensitive to that and in other areas I'll be sensitive to the fifth floor again. So. The sort of cumulative effect there. So, um. I'm ready to move on to number two, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. And in relation to adjacent streets, property or improvements. And Tim, I, I think it's great to start with your suggested conditions. I have.
So I, I, I think, um, you know, again, the, the circulation and, and parking and traffic plan were, were peer reviewed by, by Beta Group. You know, the board would be, um, well advised to lean on that, that expert evidence. You know, the, the, a big thing about these peer reviews is, you know, where the study's done, you know, according to, you know, professional standards, um, you know, which is important. It means that you can, you know, you can have a level of trust, um, in, in the results of those, um. Of those studies, um, but they, they did, um, th- they, they did provide several, um, actions that, um, you know, that they recommended that the applicant. Take that would be appropriate for conditions. And so, uh, one of those being, um. Reconstructing the pedestrian ramps on both the north and south corners of mechanic street and Granite Ave. The, the town being responsible for design of the south ramp and for securing any permission for running property owners. You know, this is just, you know, it's. It's, it's not nothing, but when you've got one handicap ADA compliant ramp and, and on one side of the street and not one on the other. Um, it kind of defeats the purpose. So we wanted to make sure that that connection is made. Um, you know, the town will need to sort of, you know, come up with a design that kind of works, um, you know, for, it is town land, obviously it's the sidewalk, but. Um, we'll work with the, the, the development team on that. The four outdoor parking spaces will be adequately signed to restrict their use to business owners and/or employees. To the extent that those, um, outdoor spaces are, are going to sort of double as visitor parking or, or anything. We're going to make sure, you, you need to make sure that they're sufficiently signed so that there's no confusion. Um, if someone pulls in, you know, these are not public parking spaces from X time to Y time. Um, and we'll want to make sure that that signage is there. Um, you know, that condition can, can also be, you know, further conditioned, you know, on approval by the planning director, just to make sure that.
Okay.
Let's do that. Get it. Um, and then a, a traffic management plan prior to construction, um, you know. All of these larger projects, um, need to come up with a construction management plan that's, you know, reviewed and, and approved by the building commissioner, um, and the DPW director. The, the, the traffic management plan around construction particularly, um, is going to be important. Our engineering department has been looking at this, um, with, with really close attention, um, as to sort of, you know, the staging and. Um, of, of vehicles and where construction, you know, workers are going to go. Um, you know, they're, we're going to be taking parking off the street on Granite Ave for, for quite some time if this construction takes place. I'm going to want to make sure that, you know, the parking spaces that remain. By, by construction workers. We do need those in the business district. Um, and so that, that kind of traffic management plan, um, i- is going to have to be provided prior to construction. So those are the three conditions that Beta recommended. And, and, and I think they're good ones, um, and I think.
Okay, so I, I propose that we. Make all those, those three beta suggestions our conditions, preconditions, okay? All right, anyone want to discuss further or moving on? Okay, um. So, um. Marion suggests onsite traffic circulation. Conditioned upon markings will be provided in the driveway for two-way use. Parking spaces on the street in front of the building will be marked. Commercial parking will have appropriate signage, um, like Tim just said. And existing street patterns will be followed. So.
Yeah, that's good.
I thought those were good. And I, but I did want to sort of talk through, um, the parking situation. For residential parking, um, they have forty-two spaces in the garage. Forty compact, um, which exceeds the town zoning by law of twenty-five percent compact, compact car parking off-street. The zoning, I believe, is one spot per bedroom. So if, if you did that, there'd be thirty-one two bedrooms and three one bedrooms would be sixty-five spots, so. So they have forty-two spaces in the garage. So. Then they don't have any onsite customer parking. I think the, the retail space is general, generally, um. One spot per two hundred and fifty feet, square feet. So that would equal eleven spots. But they're, they're saying the customer parking would go on-street. So it'd be off, on-street. It wouldn't be onsite. It would be on-street is what they're saying.
They did have some onsite parking during the day for the commercial spaces on mechanic street.
That's for employees. I think that's.
Oh, that it was strictly limited to employees. I thought that, you know, I'm.
No, it's going to be marked for employees. Was it right, Tim?
Yeah, Kathleen, because, because there, um, there's tandem spaces.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You gotta have it for the employees.
The one thing I would say just about the underlying zoning and the parking is. We've identified through our other studies that, um, those parking requirements have. Have been largely at the holdback in anything being redeveloped in our business districts because our sites are small. And the parking requirements are high and it really just, it prohibits anything being done except if you have a large site. And so, um. All the biz, most of the businesses that are not the restaurants or the food center rely on curbside parking, right? So even when we looked at the, um. Orthodoxus who opened up on the corner of Bryant and Pleasant, I think it was.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, there were, you know, parking, there were questions about where would his clientele park, right? The, the reality is that most of the, the smaller buildings and smaller businesses, which these two small, these are too small of a business spots. Is they rely on the curbside parking and. You know, there's been, there's a lot of discussion in, in, we've talked about it in the past about, you know. Curbside parking, you know, is it really free? You know, um, so curbside management is something that the town has to wrestle. You know, um, so curbside management is something that the town has to wrestle with. Because, um. You know, service-owned parking and customer parking, you know, where. There is service-owned parking so that employees, it's designed for employees to park there. So, you know, if there was an opportunity for employees to park in service-owned parking and free up two of those spaces for customers, I think that would be a benefit. The other thing I'd like to see is, um, at least one of the parking spaces someplace, whether it's a curbside or inside. Be designated for car share, um, because I think, um. We need to be thinking about less cars. Less parking requirements rather than more, and car share is a good way.
I think Michael mentioned that at some point, maybe at the East Milton neighborhood meeting. That they would set aside potentially a space for, you know, whatever the.
So we can, I'd, I'd like to have that be, you know, some, consider that for a condition. Um, and then, um, you know, is it a possibility that, except for those two tandem spaces? That, uh, employees park in service-owned parking and the other two are for customers. Uh, you know, it's not something we talked about before, but I don't think it's unreasonable.
But we don't have service-owned parking anywhere, do we?
Yes, we do. It's across, you can jump across the highway and get to the other side, but that's service-owned parking over there. Bryant, I think it is.
On Bryant?
Where are we talking about, um, the ride-share spot? Are you talking about on the property in the back on those three or four spot? No.
No, I think Michael.
Besides the building.
One in the garage. She was going to have.
Okay.
I mean, I, I also know that, like near my office again, the curbside, the city has taken some curbside parking spaces. And designated them as right, as car share for Zipcar. Nobody else can park there except Zipcar. So if we, you know, if the town wanted to do it, take one of those curbside spots.
Well, that goes to the enforcement issue which we have, which, and you know, and I've talked about it a bazillion times. Rich has talked about it constantly. We don't do it.
Yeah, so I think one, one. One inside in terms of this project would. And then as we look at curbside overall throughout East Milton, I think we could look at other locations for. For Zipcar. Rich, if that's what you're getting to, is trying to think about having some in East Milton.
Well, no, I like the idea. I just, whenever you designate something in East Milton, a loading dock or anything, it does not become that. Um, I mean, perfect example is, you know, um. Abbey Park and Starbucks and Navara, all that, you know, the loading dock was supposed to be in one area, but the reality is. I mean, jeez, I, I, I mean, yesterday, I was getting down Franklin Street and there was an eighteen-wheeler and two box trucks lined up. On the left side as you're going down Franklin from Adams. That's not the loading area. There is no designated loading area there, but yet, you know, it's been like that for years. And I, and I'm on a soapbox here, so I apologize, but I'll stop in a second. That's something that could be fixed tomorrow if the town wanted to, and they don't. And so that's the reason why there's so many complaints about parking and loading docks and things like that, because we don't fix those simple issues. Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's right. We're going to be talking about loading zones soon. Um, so, so we. We have a proposed loading zone on, on-street for FedEx, UPS, mail trucks, Amazon. Potentially moving trucks because. People are going to be living in condos. They're going to need to move their couches and their beds and everything into the condo units. So they're going to have trucks, probably eighteen-wheelers if they're coming from out of state. And we have no onsite visitor or service parking. So any, you know, plumbers, electrician, handyman, Comcast provider, you know, those guys, they don't have anywhere to park. So I looked at thirty-six and fifty Elliott Street, um, which is a mixed-use site. And the plan calls for ninety-nine spots for sixty-six units. So it's. One-point-five spots per unit. And it would take care of the residents and the visitor parking. It's kind of near a trolley. Um, the condition reads, there shall be reasonably convenient guest parking. So they have guest parking. Eighty-eight Wharf has two spaces for each residential unit, which is, um, one space per bedroom. Um, and they have a trolley right next door. Um, they do have four spaces per thousand feet of business onsite. Hendry's, one-thirty-one Elliott Street, six one-bedroom units get six, um, spots. Thirty-two two-bedroom units gets forty-eight spaces. So they get, for the two bedrooms, they do one-point-five per bedroom. They have an additional eighteen spots available for visitors, service providers and residents. You know, from, from six, six PM to nine AM, so overnight. So thirty-four units, they, they provide eighty-eight spaces. Thirty-six Central Ave has three commercial units and eighteen residential units. They have thirty-four bedrooms. They have twenty-four spots onsite and twenty-three spots offsite. So they have roughly one spot per bedroom plus visitor spots plus commercial spots. It's a rather confusing schedule, but they, they have all these things. So we have. Mixed-use projects that, that have. Far more parking spaces. Yeah, they have, they have onsite parking, um, you know.
So with these stats, are you trying to make a suggestion that we make a condition that they provide more parking?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, you know, looking at all of these options, I think. I think asking for one-point-five units per two bedrooms. Um, and one, one parking spot per one bedroom. I think that that is in line with what we've done with our mixed-use projects that are in effect in Milton. And that are act, that, you know, we, we can see they work. They're all working pretty well.
Yeah, I, I disagree because I think we've required too much parking. You know, the trend for walkable neighborhoods is less parking. Um, and we know that, that adding more parking drives the cost of parking up. So it drives the cost of building housing up. It. Increases the gap in affordability. And it doesn't account for people who don't need that number of parking spaces. MAPC has a study that they did. And you know what happens is people who don't have those cars. That number of cars end up subsidizing in a way of paying for garages. Uh, for parking that they don't need and they don't use. It's because of the cost that increased to the housing. And so, um. You know, we've talked before about how developer, uh, wouldn't propose a project that wasn't financially feasible. And in, in my view and my experience is if the developer felt they needed more parking than what they're proposing, they would propose it. Because if they didn't feel like they could sell or rent units, there, they would have financial risk, large financial risk. A project like this is not getting large institutional financing. Probably getting a bank loan with certain guarantees on it. And, you know, they wouldn't be able to get a loan even from a bank if the bank didn't think it was a viable project. You know, so I feel like, um, we, if, if we all are worried about the environment, like we all say we are. Now, we have to look at cutting back on our carbon emissions. And, you know, the more parking spaces we, uh, provide, we're just inviting more traffic in this area. In an area where people can walk and bike to get to all of their amenities. It'll make things worse for folks, not better.
All right, I, I, I respect where you're coming from. I, I just also know that this is a neighborhood that has a lot of parking issues. And the mixed-use projects that I referred to are closer to the trolley. And they, you know, they have often one spot per bedroom. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm suggesting one-point-five spots, um, per two-bedroom. Um, based on thirty-six and fifty Elliott. Um, I spoke with some people who live at eighty-eight Wharf. Um, and they, they have, you know, one, one spot per bedroom and they're, they're complaining that they don't have. You know, visitor parking and they don't have service parking. They have some visitor parking, but they don't, they don't feel that they have enough. And they, they really, they say if they didn't have their concierge, then it would be nearly impossible to manage. When the plumber comes or the electrician comes or so on and so forth. This building isn't going to have a concierge.
One thing about eighty-eight Wharf, um, when we were doing Milton Village, I looked through all the permits that were granted for that. And the parking was something that was amended several times. And when they started, they had visitor parking, but somehow when they leased the space, their commercial space. They gave up some of that, um, visitor parking to that commercial user. And their restaurant parking relies on town-owned curbside parking and town-owned parking lot parking for that restaurant. So they are not parking that restaurant on their site. They're used, they're doing the same thing that's done for pretty much all other restaurants in town, which is counting. That was one of the things I was concerned about with Milton Village was if every place gets to count the curbs, are we going to run out of curb space, right? So, and they're, they are a location that has the largest, one of the largest amounts of land that they could have, uh, provided. Remember, we, we granted approval for that most recent plan of their parking and I expressed that concern. So. You know, I think, um. If we're going to compare, you know, to other locations, um, you know, uh. Trends have changed too in the last five, ten, fifteen, twenty years since, since some of those things were permitted. In terms of, um, people's outlook on the impact of carbon emissions and, and whether there's one-car families. I, I did speak to, um, a friend of mine who's a Realtor and asked her if she sees demand for East Milton differently than she sees demand elsewhere in town. And what she told me from her experience was that she does see, um, a lot of interest in East Milton. Particularly for young couples who are coming from the city to Milton, um. And they like East Milton because it's walkable and, um, they can walk to amenities like they're used to in the city. And, and her opinion, it was, uh, driving some of the cost of housing in East Milton. Um, differently than other parts of Milton that didn't have that same attribute. And so, uh, and, and her view is that those folks already, because of the kind of places they've been living, um, are one-car families. And, um, and intended to stay one-car family. So I think, um. We, we have to, uh, we have to bear those things in mind, not just look at what we, what the board in the past approved.
All right, I, I, I didn't know if Rich or Meredith, I, I.
Rich was first.
Hi, hello. Um, sorry, get my hand down. Sorry, and sorry I was late. I, um. Although I will tell you, we made pasta and, uh, food in Boston and I left right before it was made, so.
You didn't even get to eat.
I need to go out for Italian food soon. Um, anyway. Um, no, I, so I'll start here. So, well, actually, because I missed the beginning, I'll say, I, I do like this project. I, I, I really do. I think, um, I mean, I live in East Milton. I don't live near here where this is. But I live in East Milton and I, I'm not speaking for anybody of my neighbors. But I think a lot of folks would love to see some revitalization going on i- in the neighborhood. Um, it could use it. And so I am excited about these projects that come up. I, I do want to say though, um, I feel like as part of my job on the planning board is to make sure we're doing what's right. And making sure we're, we're, we're looking at all the things we're supposed to be doing. So while I want to see this project go through it, I'm really hopeful it does. Um, I'm not in the, I'm not saying any of you are, but I have heard this a lot in, in different board meetings. I'm not in the camp of just let it go, or, or I prove it as is, because I don't think that's our job. And I don't think we'd be doing our neighbors in our town, no matter where you live, any service doing that. And I'm saying that just because, not that I've seen it on this board, but I've seen it in other areas. Um, so to, to back to this point, I agree totally Cheryl, what you just said about, um. You know, parking. I am in the camp of, you know, if you build it, they will come. If you build three spaces per unit. You're going to allow for very large families coming into the, to, to the area. Um, the reality is if I was looking for a house and there was no parking, I wouldn't live there. I wouldn't buy the unit. Um, we went through that when we were talking about vents, when we were building these micro-units and there was very limited parking. And I was absolutely for a limited amount of parking because the reality is these, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember, but if they're three hundred square feet. Chances are you're not going to get a family of five moving in with two cars. Um, and so again, build it, they will come. And if you don't build the parking, they're probably not going to come. However, um, I do agree with you, Denny, on, on the parking for the other things, right? People coming, whether it's deliveries, whether it's friends, family, people coming in different, you know, whatever. That is going to impact that neighborhood. It will. It's just, there's no argument there. It will, because there's already parking issues over there. And if I decide I want to go visit a friend that just moved in over there, I'm going to park on the street, either in one of the spots on Granite. Or I'm going to make my own spot on Mechanic. And so there is no more spots for those folks, or there might be a couple. And I know this is not the way I'm going to word this in a little while, but I will just say straight out, I mean. We have an issue in this town where we, where we stop at the, you know, let's reduce the parking, but then we don't think of. Where the customer is going to come, park, where are the deliveries going to park? And that's a major problem in East Milton. Um, we heard when some of the restaurants were going in that there would never be eighteen-wheelers coming. These are box trucks that do deliveries. The reality is they're not box trucks that do deliveries. They're eighteen-wheelers that do most of those deliveries. They're every day. I, I know this because I see them coming down my street every single day. It's not a major problem for me, but. Where they park is a major safety issue because there are kids running around East Milton Square on weekends and during the summer. And so I do think about those things. Um, so my, my thing about this project is I do like the idea of limiting the actual. I wouldn't want to see them build more parking inside necessarily for, for the units. But I do think they need to have adequate parking for their deliveries, for the, the people coming and showing up. And I do agree, I mean, the parking on the Granite Street is public parking. I mean, it's tough. To hear that be counted in any way in different projects because, you know. Technically, I could go park there and park there all day long if I want, and, and it could be my spot. I mean, anybody can, right? And so when you count on it, um, it, it, you know. Knowing the area like we all do, knowing Milton, I mean, the parking is going to get limited pretty quickly. And so I do think there should be some conditions built into this, um, to make sure we have adequate parking. Maybe it's off-street for deliveries, um, or maybe it's off-street, um, for, for. You know, the people that show up and, and visitors and so forth. Anyway, end of soapbox.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, Meredith, did you have your hand up? I, I'm not seeing hands tonight, so I think we're going to have.
Yes, I, I did. I did have a hand up. I just wanted to talk, just, um, because I just agree with Rich, um, on that. And, and Denny and her concern for parking and that you say. Because from the beginning of this project, we've been told things like, well, people won't, people won't drive to use the commercials. The commercial, um, they'll, they'll, they'll walk. Everyone's going to walk here. Well. It, it, it would be ideal to say that people aren't going to drive to use the commercial space, that employees aren't going to drive to work. That guests are going to walk over from another part of East Milton, but. That, that is not a reality. And from a, from a real estate perspective. I don't have people, I know for a fact, people move to Milton and they are, they are downsizing. And I don't know anyone who has one vehicle. Of all the homes that I've sold, people are downsizing to smaller units. They still have two cars. And I do, I do have concerns because I think part of our responsibility is making sure that this project is a marketable project. And if you have only, you know, a limited amount of parking, no guest parking. I know it's been an issue for even, um, thirty-six Central I'm more familiar with. That even has, that has guest parking, um, onsite in some commercial parking. And it's just, it's a, it's a real challenge. It's a challenge for the residents, um, looking to buy unless you're single. Maybe divorced, you, you're, you know, a different, you know, for whatever your purpose, but that, that, there is a market for this. And for somebody who does want, um, fewer vehicles, but it's very, very limited. It, it is. The trends are changing, but I think the trends are changing more in the city, which you may be familiar with. But we're not seeing in the suburbs right now. We're not seeing that being a, we're, there are some, and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying they're not. But I'm saying it is a very limited market in the suburbs.
We just don't have any product, Meredith. So it's, it's a little hard to know, um, when. You know, when we don't have product, uh, when the product that we have is all single-family, then that's going to drive who you, you know, who comes to Milton and the. You know, when we don't have product, uh when the product that we have is all single family, then that's gonna drive who you, you know, who comes to Milton in a sense. But it also drives who can't come to Milton, who who we are excluding from Milton, because we don't have enough variety in our housing stock. And we can't build. Yeah, I know, but the parking drives it too, because i- i- not everybody can afford two cars. Not everybody has a family, it might be one person with one child and they have. What they wanna be in Milton, but there's no place for them to live. You know, it might be a a widow who wants to live near their grandchildren, but. You know, doesn't have an option besides the single family house that if they sold, they have nowhere to go nearby. It's it's a different kind of demographic that's identified in the housing production plan, it's identified. By the state, it's identified in many places and, you know what, so what we're doing is we're excluding a lot of people because we don't have options. And a small unit is not the family that's gonna have, you know, two or three vehicles. It's it's meeting a different need.
So, well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, um Meredith, I I wanted.
I just was gonna say that they, uh, do you know what the average cost of a condo is in Milton now? If you were gonna have to guess.
Couldn't understand you.
What the average cost right now, what what condos are costing, what these units are costing that we're talking about. They're over one point one million and and higher, is that is the average price of a condo right now on the market currently in Milton. So people, the problem, and this is another, it's just a housing discussion that I think we should have, is that people are are downsizing. But if they sell a, if they sell their home for one point one million, they're not gonna buy a condo for one point one million either necessarily. So it's not necessarily the widow who's going to be, you know.
Yeah, but like one thing I'd say is like eighty eight war, there's, those are really large units, even Milton Hill House, they're all two-bedroom units. You know, we uh even thirty six Central, you know, so. Yes, if you're buying a yard, a large unit, you're not getting a big change in your price. But if you are building a smaller unit, then I, you know, and you have more product. You know, it's supply and demand, as you know, when we have very little supply, it drives the demand. I mean, it dr- it, I'm sorry, it drives the cost up high, uh when the demand is high, um so we need a better balance.
And that's what I guess I'm saying is balance, like the balance is going from, yes, we've had maybe more parking than we maybe needed on some sites, although I haven't really seen that. But going to the opposite extreme, you're gonna impact the neighborhood, and it's gonna have a detrimental impact to the neighborhood that they are gonna.
The fact of the matter is, there's no more room on this site for parking. I shouldn't have jumped.
Because of the density, yeah.
I mean, the the, no, but the 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 site is what it is, and it he's jammed as much parking as he can possibly put. And so it's just a question, it goes to the fundamental question of whether you wanna approve the project or not, he can't add more parking. We can't put in a requirement.
Well, the project will go away if we put in a condition that doubles the required parking. And we, I think that, you know, we we shouldn't like do things that we know are going to kill a project, it it and not admit that that's what we're trying to do.
We we don't, we don't know that it would kill the project, it it, we could. Uh and and I I wanted to pick up on what Meredith said, we're going. We're going from one spot per bedroom or two spots per unit, they are suggesting one spot per unit. For two bedrooms, I'm suggesting we do something in the middle, so that um. And 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 by the way, tho- those four properties that I mentioned, uh they they're all near a trolley and East Milton just isn't near a ch- a trolley, so.
It's near us, two of them.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, I mean, that that bus goes every four or six hours.
I take it all the time.
Oh, well, that's good, well, I I I, okay, well, there you go.
I took when I went to Sweden, uh yeah, no, you get. You go to the, go to the trolley. Tim's hand was up, Tim's hands has been up.
Okay, I'm not seeing hands tonight, I'm sorry, guys, I'm not seeing anyone's hand, so bear with me, please go.
Not a, not a problem, Danny, Danny, what what I'll say is that um. Those parking ratios in Milton Village and Central Ave um are cautionary tales. Th- those are, when we talk about the extremes of overparking, it's beyond the extreme. Um you know, in in a transit oriented district, you would, you would never see parking ratios like that today. And and I'll be quite frank, I don't think you should have seen them when those projects were permitted. Um I think it's a lost opportunity for the town of Milton to have required so much parking in those areas. Um you could have had more housing, more open space, more of the amenities that we 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 claim to want in these sort of multifamily projects. Be, you know, the less said about those parking ratios, the better. Um because they're just, they're just so far outside of of. Of of sort of mainstream thought on on parking in in multifamily projects in amenity-rich neighborhoods. So I think you really do need to look at what are the circumstances of this individual project, so not to say that the parking ratio is 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 perfect. But I think sort of weighing it against what we've already permitted would be a mistake, because I think that that those those projects are 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 way overparked. And I think, you know.
I I I don't think the people that live there feel that they're overparked, when I talk to the people that live there, they say. Yeah, there's a trolley there, but I still have to pick my daughter up at the high school and I still have to run my son to the mall, so I still need a car. Because I live in Milton and the way it, that that's just the way it is, even when there's a trolley, there's still a two-family car. Uh you know, a car of.
I mean, Danny, what I, what I, what I think, what I think I'm contending is that if there were less parking, those people would not live there. People who had, you know, a car sufficient to parking that was on-site would live there. And people with more cars would live somewhere else, there's plenty of other opportunities in Milton and elsewhere to to park multiple cars per family. There's not a lot of opportunities to live in a place where, you know, y- you're not paying for a parking that you're not using.
I would just say too that my daughter um had one of her friends in high school lived at eighty eight Warf with her mother. Um yeah, and it was the two of them that lived there, she was the only child in that building at the time. So I don't know how many children are there now, and she was in high school then, so she wasn't a young child. And um and she did take the trolley, and my daughter went down there to take the trolley with her. Um you know, and um, you know, kids will walk from Milton Academy down to Lower Mills to take the trolley. Um then they'll walk over, again, my daughter, one of her friends went there, and you know, the, her classmates would walk to uh Milton Village and across. Um the river to uh Lower Mills to go get an ice cream at the Ice Cream Smith. Um and I do try and ride my bike and I do try and park once in East Milton and walk to things. And if it's safe, people will do it, if it's convenient, people will do it. And it's it's the, if you build it, they will come idea, and if we, as a, as a nation, as a, as a community, as a state, as a nation, as a world. Continue to think that we have to have a car all the time, we won't have a planet for our children and grandchildren anymore. If you attend any conference, like I attend a lot, on um on. What we need to do in the building industry to cut emissions, but what we need to do in the, with our vehicles too. We, you know, we need smart growth. And smart growth is less parking. It's building where we have amenities, so people who live here will be able to walk to do nearly everything, they can get their groceries. They can go out to dinner, they can go to the pharmacy, they can get their haircut, they can do, get their nails done, they can go to get their insurance. They can do all of these things and walk from there, and if the kids are in elementary school, they should be able to walk down Cunningham with them or Saint Agatha's with them. You know, there's so much in this area and the arguments for two cars in other parts of town, I can, not down by the trolley. But other parts of town I can agree with, because you don't have the same amenity-rich area. I just think it's a, it would be a real shame to kill this project for kind of parking. For a kind of part of town that doesn't exist right here, and I know that this will kill this project. If you, if you double the parking or even increase it by one and a half, it will kill this project, and we need to have that conversation. Do we wanna kill this project?
Okay, I I I don't see it as killing the project, at most, it would mean they couldn't have a fifth story, but that's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is responding to the constituents and the citizens who elected us. And the citizens of this area have told us, and they've told me for the last six, seven years, they've told me over and over and over again, that parking is an issue. That there's not enough parking in East Milton, and I think in all places in town, we should be sensitive to that, but most of all here. So I I feel that I'm willing to move somewhat away from the one spot per bedroom. In in the direction that you are suggesting, but I'm just not comfortable going all the way to the one, one spot per bedroom. Given everything that I know from the residents of this area and 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 the residents of the town.
I'm a resident of this area, and I've been a resident of this area for thirty years.
Excuse me, Kathleen, I wasn't done yet, but that's, that's fine, um, all right, um, but I.
I know you can't see it, Danny, sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you, Rich.
Yeah, no, I I, so I'm having, I'm having a little trouble following this conversations, i- and I, and it might be, Danny, because I don't understand. Where, like, I'm not truly understanding the, like, the both sides here, because, so you heard, like, my comment, I'll say it again. Actually, I feel like saying this too, like, so I, my job, I don't know, like, I feel like my job isn't to just make sure this project goes through. I want to see it go through, and I wanna have a good conversation about it, but I don't want the conversation to just end at. It's gotta go through and and we just can't put too many restrictions on it, so it just goes through, because I don't think we're doing the town any good either. However, I agree, I am not interested in overparking this, right, like, I just am not, so I don't know enough about. The parking at that site um in Central, I I just, I wasn't there at the beginning of it, I just don't understand like what the calculus was. I guess, one of my, so my issue is, I don't wanna overpark for the people that live there, because I a hundred percent agree with you, Cheryl, you can walk, this is a great neighborhood to walk to things. However, that's not my gripe with parking, my parking issue is the deliveries, the loading dock. The the the, you know, people coming to visit this place, the reality is, they're one, I don't, like. I I mean, I guess we could argue this point, but of course there's going to be visitors, and of course there's going to be deliveries. Quite honestly, I mean, and it's not a bad thing, I don't complain about it, because geez, I think Amazon comes to my day, my house to wait too many times a week. But I don't complain about the Amazon trucks coming down the street, but they come down my street like nineteen times a day, absolutely. They, so there will be deliveries throughout the day coming to this place, whether it's for the residential or whether it's for the businesses. And what I'm worried about for the neighbors there, or again, the detriment to those neigh- that neighborhood is not necessarily the units. Or the amount of people that's coming in it, it's what's going to come with that, right? And so I don't think it's inappropriate to say you've gotta have some parking for those things, and so is that mean two you, two per unit? Of course not, because nobody's gonna all of a sudden have, like, every unit's gonna have a visitor over that day, or every unit is gonna have an issue with loading. Um but we should figure out what that calculus is, and so I guess my other question is. Maybe the, you know, units that we were talking about on the other side, you know, in Central or or whatever. It wasn't appropriate to have so much, but I guess my question there is, is where is the loading there, where is the visitor parking? Is there visitor parking, is there an off-street loading dock? Because I have to say, that changes the ballgame and you can't compare either way, because those add a lot of detriment to that area. If you have off off-street um loading, I mean, the reality is, and I hate, I I mean, you guys are, not, no offense, but you guys are connecting it to other properties. So I'll connect it to another property, I was complaining about Franklin Street and the loading. If those box trucks actually pu- pulled into the parking lot there for Abbey Park or some of those units, we wouldn't even have an issue, right? There wouldn't be an issue with park, with with loading and unloading, but they don't pull onto property, they stay on the street and they park in the middle of the street. But we are gonna have an issue there unless we really think about this, so again, I'm looking at more conditions of loading dock, and I'm not. I, what I'm afraid of is what happened at Novara, the town saying it will be on gr- on on the main road, and then it disappeared.
Yeah, one thing, one thing, just Rich is that.
Yeah, go ahead.
They've they've agreed that there wouldn't be restaurants here, and maybe that's a condition um or that we suggest that the.
Everybody has delivery.
In terms of use, yeah, and but and the other thing is, if we can pull up the site plan, um they do have an area that they want the town to designate for deliveries. That's, it's it's curbside, and I don't know if that's what you mean by having designated, if you want them to try and do it on site. But if if you, Tim, can you just, let's pull it up so we can see what they're proposing?
So I mean, in my opinion, off-site, off the street would be the best, I mean, if it was on granite, that's probably a number two good spot, but the problem there is, look, you're. You're losing two spots, now, the fact of the matter is, in those two spots, you're going to get some very large trucks that park there. And so I don't know how you handle that, but that's probably for the the building commissioner, right, or the building department to make sure that doesn't happen. Um I do worry about it for that neighborhood, right, because whoever is doing that job right now isn't doing a very good job in East Milton.
Yeah, one thing, so on here on the street here, just again, and just, Rich, just so you know, those red lines are where like. Uh curb cuts would be removed, so like there's a net gain of um, what is that, five spaces, and they're suggesting two of them be designated for zoning. Because, you know, this parcel right now is composed of a number of parcels that have curb cuts. So I don't know if everybody remembered that in the presentation, but that, I just wanted to point that out if you're thinking about it.
Yep, yeah, no, no, that's good.
Okay, so the loading dock question is number four, and we're still on number two, but I I agree with everything you're saying, Rich. No, that's okay.
Say this, dear Danny, it, I mean, I think my end game is similar to what you have, unfortunately, the amount of um. Units you have, pred- I mean, it ultimately tells you how many parking you have, how much parking you have. And the fact of the matter is, you know, let's say, the, what they have for indoor parking, that that structure, maybe that's fantastic. You know, if if, you know, like you said, if a floor came down, you don't need as much of that for parking, right? So now maybe there are some spots for, you know, visitors, I don't even know if you could do that, because just uh visitors won't even know how to use the thing or have access to it, but. I mean, I don't know, that's just the thing that I'm thinking about right now, I'm not looking for.
I don't think it's for us to solve, I think you're right, I think that.
Yeah, I'm not looking for an argument, I'm just saying what my opinion is.
No, I totally agree with you, and I think, no, and I totally agree with you that um, what you had said at the beginning. It's not about whether or not we are supporting or stopping the project, that's not what the goal is at all. The goal is to steer this in the most positive direction, like you said, it's about coming up with conditions. That could make it actually work and be the best it can be, um given the parameters. We only have these six items, there are other, you know, departments that will weigh in on all these other things, but on these six items, we just wanna put the best possible. Conditions on it. The, I just, I just wanted to respond to that part, uh Rich, do you follow what I'm saying, like, I think you're right, I. I I don't think, anyway.
I just wanna add that we have to be mindful of um making projects on economics, because that's what happened. Um with the South Sonya and now Corcoran project. And I know we think that we have a temporary, we have a two-year temporary moratorium coming, but two years passed pretty quickly. And this developer has told us, you know, that this is the project that makes economic sense. And we can just not believe them or not, but I think, you know, I I take that at face value. I I take it as, you know, taking a floor off, if it were doable, would have been done by now. And so I think we just, i- if we're gonna try and say, well, we real, our goal really is to take a floor off. And we're gonna do it by increasing the parking requirements, let's don't be secure this about it. You know, because I, you know, either we're going to approve a project that developer says works for them, and we have to decide if they. Are all of the things that are potential impacts, you know, being solved by it, and if. If their solutions to the potential impacts aren't being solved, then I think Kathleen's right, why are we going through and talking about things like planters? When if others are going to say that this project is not something at this scale that they're going to vote for, because to me, um. You know, making the parking so that you end up having to take a floor off is going to do that, so.
I'm actually not even suggesting that they take a floor off, I'm just suggesting that we condition reasonable parking or parking. That that would be appropriate, I mean, none of these other projects that I studied today. Didn't have a plan for onsite visitor parking, and they they had, they they checked all the boxes for. I mean, this, this doesn't have, this doesn't have, I mean, I would argue it doesn't have enough residential parking. But it also doesn't have any visitor onsite parking, it doesn't have.
Um Mike, can you answer that question to a certain extent, Danny? Because at the meeting with the East Milton Neighborhood Association, the developer said that the employee spaces. Because at the meeting with the East Milton Neighborhood Association, the developer said that the employee spaces. In the evening, when the businesses are closed, would be made available through the operation of the condominium association. For visitor parking. So, clearly, there's no employees at the whatever shops or something that are on. Yeah, that are in the commercial space, and that those spaces would be available in the evening for visitors. Um, and so, and then it also would be handling the situation that. If there were empty spaces in the garage, for example. If somebody like me bought a two-unit condo and got two parking spaces, and clearly, I don't need two parking spaces. Um, so, you know, I, I'm paying condo fees for parking that I don't need. I'd either sell it to somebody else in the uni- in the building, or, you know, make it available for, you know. You know, visitor parking or guest parking. Um, the, one of the biggest complaints about East Milton, of course, as everywhere else in Milton, is traffic. So, the more parking spaces you require in this building, the more traffic there is coming in and out. And so, I really think that people will self-select. I, as you know, have been a real estate attorney for over forty years. I represent private people all the time, I also represent cities and towns. But I have had six clients in the last year, who have sold their houses here in Milton. And have had to move to other places, because as Cheryl said, we don't provide opportunities for somebody to downside. I mean, if you wanna spend a million something on the Hendry's plant, there's, that's that one. But other than that, people have moved to Copperworks in Canton, they've moved to Quincy, to all the new condos that are there. So, I know that there's not the ability for people to find what they want in this town. And if you need, if you have an SUV and you need to drive sixteen kids someplace, well, you're not, not gonna move here. That's okay. Um, but I do think if we're concerned about parking and tra- that we're concerned here in East Milton about traffic. Cause we're a complete cut-through spot, why do I wanna add more parking with more traffic?
Okay, thank you, I'm married .
I, it's, I think it, it comes down to balance. I'm all about, like, let's not have one extreme or the other. And parking is an issue, and the only thing I just wanna remind people is, if there was enough parking. In this area on Mechanic Street and next door, the nail salon would not be parking her employees still. On that front lawn and at night, in the backyard, where the butter neighbor, the neighbors on Pierce have to see.
Somebody mentioned that at the East.
And I'm just not sure, you know, once that gets enforced, and hopefully the town will start to enforce that, that we don't park on lawns. Then those people will need to be parking on the streets as well, and it just, it's an issue now, and if it, if it. If it wasn't an issue, there's no reason for those people to be parking on lawns. So, there is an issue, and it's right here next to this project, and this project needs to find a balance to, to protect its own residents. It, it's more for the future of those residents that they have, um, you know.
Yeah, for the people who are going to live there, and I do, I, I, I wanted to see if we wanted to put a condition. That the residents can offer their spot back, like Kathleen had said.
It would be under the condo, con- condo documents, it's not part of site approval, so.
Okay, so that's already gonna be done .
Special permit, you could think about it, but, you know, I, and as I said, I think market forces will drive that, so.
Okay.
I would like to say that, I don't know if it's in their plans, but that we should require, um. Bicycle parking indoor for one spot for e- each unit. And it, I don't recall if that's in the plan or not, and there should be, um, parking for the commercial. In that, uh, street furnishing zone, which is the brick zone.
Um, there is parking, I mean, by parking, I don't know how mu- how many, how large the racks are.
I think Rich had his hand up, but I can't really tell.
A quick question, so actually, I've got another comment, but question on that, um, where were you talking about Cheryl? Like, that parking along the, the brick zone, is that on the, the public street?
Yes, it's like, you know, it's common to have, it's, it's, it's called the street furnishing zone, where you put, um. Uh, benches, trees.
Oh, okay .
Planters, you know, bike racks, uh, so they're not like. Blocking sidewalks in various places, you have a zone for it, it's an organized zone, zone.
Okay, yeah, I, so, I don't know, I, I feel like, maybe you're right, I mean, I feel like we're spending a lot of time on this one. I'm fine wi- with whatever you guys wanna do, I just, one of my issues is, I feel like we're still stuck on this. It's either we approve it, or we don't approve it, and I'm not there. I don't, I wanna approve this project. Um, I guess, you know, I am not an architect, I'm not a developer. I have been in business for a long time, and I understand economic. I'm not, I, it's not my job to make this economical. I do wanna see it go, so I do think, you know, there's probably more opportunities, um, to make that happen, but the, the reality is. I mean, I think this project, as opposed to other ones we've seen, is, you know, the developer probably did a good thing by not buying it first, then coming to us, or coming to the town. That's probably not a good de- good idea in this town. Um, it's contingent, and, you know, the reality is, I'm hoping they work it out. And they, and they make the project good, if they, if they, if, if we put too many things on this, right? I'm not looking to do that. But I do have an issue, again, I'm not looking to overpark this thing, but I think any building. This magnitude in a congested area has a requirement to at least, at minimum. Park like, you know, make sure that when there's deliveries happening, or there's some visitors happening. I mean, again, I'm, I, I'm all there with you Cheryl, you should not, I mean, I've seen buildings go up in other parts of the country where there's zero parking, and I'm for it. But the reality is, most of those buildings have spots for lo- loading, because they're in a city, maybe there's. You know, underground garages where they come into, and so they're not doing it in the middle of the street. I know that some do, but East Milton, I mean. I don't, I, again, sorry, I'm on my soapbox here, but I'm not looking at this as a all-or-nothing thing. I think we should talk about that, though, because. If half the board wants it to be an all-or-nothing thing, well, then we're never gonna get to a vote a- a- at the end of this, and then we're just wasting lots of time.
Well, my, I guess my point.
You have a, you have a de- developer come before us with a lot of variances, and then the idea is, well, you, you can't say no to anything. Because thi- this is like, within, it's like, perfect thing. I mean, I just think that that's, we, we can't think like that. We have to, we, we have to, you know, make it the best we possibly can with the tools that we have in front of us. That's my opinion, and, and I'm, I'm willing to agree to disagree with others on that, but.
But I said, I say on site plan approval versus special permit, um, that, you know. Uh, you know, there's one thing to say, we want, you know, and I'm not necessarily saying that we have, we can't put conditions. But when you're, when you're talking about increasing the parking by fifty percent. You don't have to be realistic, folks. You know that that can't be accommodated in this footprint. So, how do you think it's going to be done? You know that it's going to necessitate a reduction in unit count. And that's the calculation you've already made, and that's why. So, I'm, I'm just saying that that's.
Property next door, they could do anything, I don't know what they have. I don't know what their options are, that's not my job to do that, my job is to, you know, my job is to. I'm sorry, I don't like it when you raise your voice. Look, my, my job is to. No, my job is to do the best conditions I can, based on what's in front of me, based on the homework that we do. So, I thought that Cheryl had some interesting condition proposals, and I wanted to hear them on, um.
So, uh, on the, on the parking side, Denny, um, and I, I just wanna, I'm trying to instill what I. My view of what would happen by that level of decrease and the parking, that's. And if we go back to the plan, and you know, and I, it comes back to what I said earlier about whether we think that this is a project. That's overall beneficial for the town, and I'd, I'd like, i- if you wanna say, put a pin here and come back and talk about what. Parking count can be, um, I, I would say.
Okay.
You know, one, you know, as far as the economics are concerned, um, and as far as like the marketability. The developer has addressed those, and I think we should take the developer's response to those questions. Into our consideration, we shouldn't put. Like, what a developer in a different location has decided is best for their project. We need, you know, that's what these other.
Oh, we do that all the time, this precedent all over town. I mean, we did that when we're talking about sidewalks, we do that when we're talking about trash, we're doing that.
No, I'm talking about parking count. If a developer tells us they'd only need a certain number of parking spaces to make their project work.
Oh, I get it .
Their project, it's not about other things, I'm just purely talking about what they've said that they need for the parking. With that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Denny, uh, do you mind if I just comment?
Please do, please jump in .
I'm really trying to make this like, not like a one side or the other, because I, I'm not a, I'm not looking for this thing to fail. But I'm also not looking to just say, hey, you know what, for the greater good of the town, you know, be damned, let's do it. Um, and forget about some of the issues I have with, with safety or other issues. I do have those issues, and I feel like, again, I'm not doing my job by just saying. It is what it is, because it's what's best for the town. I don't think that's fair, we don't do that anywhere in this town. I mean, we, we just got through countless projects where we're talking about small counts of, of units. Near really big homes, and we're saying, hey, that's a detriment, because they're not used to that. Well, the reality is, this neighborhood's not used to this either, and so we should put the best footboard and make sure we're doing what's right for the town, and for the neighborhood, and for the developer. A- again, I'm, I'm not a developer, and I, I don't understand their economics. I do understand that they haven't purchased this site yet. It's, I'm hoping they're able to make it work. I'm not looking for them to double or, or go fifty percent up on their parking, I'm looking for some very specific things. If the way they wanna get there is by removing a half a floor or a floor, or they wanna add on to this or that, I don't, I don't care how they do it. I mean, it'd be interesting to see what they come up with. Um, our job is to make sure that we're comfortable. With the si- six things that were outlined, and honestly, this is how I am thinking about it for myself. I, I do feel like, though, I, I have a problem with sticking a pin in it, because this sounds like one of the biggest sticking points. And if we go figure out all the other things, we're gonna come back to this, and it sounds like we're gonna have a problem, um, voting on this. So, I, I don't know. I mean, any of your chair, I don't wanna throw it on you, but you decide .
Uh, we, we could, um.
I just wanted to say, it's actually a one-point-two ratio right now, um, and what Denny's suggesting is a one-point-five. So, it's only a point-three increase in parking.
How many spaces does that represent?
Right now, there's thirty, forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-two spaces, so.
Yeah, I mean. Besides the space limit, the space requirement of it, uh, you know, um.
I mean, where they're going. There's no room, there's no room for more spaces .
There's a space issue of it, but there's also the, um, as I said before, in terms of. The kind of neighborhood that this is, and the kind of buyer it's anticipated, I don't think it's necessary, so that's my position still. That I don't think it's necessary to increase the spots for residential. Um, I think, um, in fact, I would be happier with one per unit, and then designating a few guest spaces. Um, and how that gets done, I'm not quite sure with the stackers, but maybe there's a one-row stacker that will be moved, and that's. Can become guest parking, but I, I just don't, I don't support the, the need for more than one space per unit. Because developers will propose what they think they need to make a project work. There's, there's a lot of communities that are getting rid of minimum parking requirements. And putting in maximum parking requirements, because they don't want more, they know, they understand that more spots generate more traffic.
Maybe we should put a pin in it, but you know what, I'll give you an example, I guess, sorry, Denny, just jump, but, I'll give you an example. If this place had zero parking indoors, I would still want them to have some visitor spots in a loading dock. And a little bit of parking for folks. I guess that's what I'm getting at, it has nothing to do with the parking garage. I think the parking garage sounds great. If it works, I'm not a, I'm not the engineer, so I rely on the engineers to say it's safe and sound. Um, it sounds wonderful, it sounds, I guess, like an arcade game, that your car comes down to you, it's awesome. But the reality, if there was zero parking, and we were all saying, hey, you know what, we don't need parking here, you're still gonna have a problem. With people coming to this site, working, visiting, deliveries. Those are still issues that, that, that they're going to have to overcome, even if we said, you know what, remove the stacker and put all residents there, which I don't think would be a smart idea. But I'm just saying that, I'm, I'm giving you like the opposite example, has nothing to do with the amount of, of people parking inside the building.
So, so Rich, are you, um, suggesting that you don't think that the. The delivery at the parking space is curbside, granted, is something that you support? So, what would you like to see as a condition then?
I, I don't know, I think you're, maybe you're right, maybe we should, this is, sounds like something we're not going to agree on, maybe we can get through everything and figure out what we do and don't. And then we should vote at the end.
Because I could tell you something that could happen, is like, uh, Boston's been changing, uh. A, a bit of what they're doing, because what they were getting was applications that are entirely parking and. And loading at the street level with nothing active at the street level. I mean, that's a possibility here, cause you don't need a variance to put parking. Across this whole site, so the retail spaces could get locked, could get dropped, and they can meet the parking that way. You know, or the loading that way, and so, you know, we have to be a little bit careful about, um. I know people think we don't wanna, that there's not, you know, we shouldn't have to worry about the impacts, but because of what I do for a living. I can't help myself, but no, and think about what the impacts are to what a development plan is, and whether it can work, and so, uh.
But, I mean, we don't know, they could put something about the cedum roof, or they could do something that's not for us to worry, but it's not for us to worry about. Or to come up with solutions for them, or we, we need to stay in our lane, our lane is come up with the best conditions for the site. It's not about steering it one way or the other, they, like, they have architects like you, and they can, they can. Figure things out with, within parameters, uh, you know.
I think we have to be mindful with the.
We asked them for that full last year, and we've gotten, I think they've jammed in as much parking as they can. So, I think the question is whether we just sort of, do we take a vote now, and whether that's a condition to increase the parking, or not?
Well, Ri- Rich said he was thinking of ti- putting a pin in it for, for later, so I guess, I'll, I'll go along with. Um, Rich's suggestion, um, in.
I don't wanna be, as Rich has said, I don't wanna be in a position of approving, is giving site plan approval to something that can't be built.
So, are you saying, what you're saying is, if, if we raise the parking at all, you're, you're not gonna vote a project through?
I don't think it can get built. I really don't, there's four visitor parking, we have a condition in there that says, you know, Marion has a condition .
Conditions on it, if, if we can't do any conditions, and then it, it, it's not our, I mean, okay.
I'm not, as I said, I, I, you have your opinion, my opinion is that I'm not gonna be voting for a project. Site plan approval that says that the somebody has to go buy another piece of property to add in more parking.
Well, I'm not suggesting that they buy another piece of property, I'm saying they have options that we don't know about, and it's not my job to know their options. Or to, or to come up with options for them. My job is to stick to these six things and come up with conditions that work for this site. In this location, and, and so, when I'm looking at this site in this location. I'm, I'm hearing from the people that there's not enough parking in this area, and I'm.
Kathleen's point about whether we put a pin in this or not, I mean, I'm really at the point where, when we think about what we've done for other site plan approvals. One we just did for, uh, Goddard School, for example, um, you know, we weren't talking about, we talked about one parking space. We talked about a fence, we talked about the lighting, we talked about, we weren't talking about things that they told us. If you take away these parking spa- more than these parking spaces, you know, we, we can't safely provide the school. I don't know why we're not giving this developer the same kind of credit that we gave the, uh, Goddard School, you know, applicant. But I, I think, um, conditions are one thing, but conditions that vastly change the project are another thing. And if you folks are supportive of, um, conditions that vastly change the project, I think we just need to take a vote on the project the way it is. Um, and not tinker around, uh, with, um, small things.
So, so what you're adding, so just to, actually, let me, one comment first. The Goddard School is a massively different project, not even close to the type of project this is, just not in the same type of area. It's not the same business, it's not the same type of, you know, the, you're talking about lots of kids .
Scale, density.
Nobody's sleeping over, there's no businesses, there's no, there's, it's just like a massive diff- it's just not even close to compare.
It's not intentionally, anyway.
About, yeah, I guess, but, so, I, I, so this is where I guess I have a problem, like, like. I don't, I, I have a hard time believing anybody in our town thinks the right idea is when a developer comes in. You just say yes, because I'm afraid somebody's gonna turn a forty buck B into this spot. That is, in my, I'm not saying it's what you're doing, but in my opinion, that's what, that's stating, and that is just something I, I'm not okay with. Just let me finish, like, I know, like, I understand that the select board and other boards have said, it's great as is. That I'm glad. That I'm glad they're not on the planning board because that is just a disaster waiting to happen. To say we're not going to think about safety, we're not going to think about, you know, how it affects different neighborhoods. I'm sorry, but we listen to other projects in other parts of the the town and we scrutinize over them. But it, you know, this one, for some reason, we don't even want to talk about, you know, anything because we're afraid it's gonna fall apart. I want to see it happen. I'm not even looking to, not looking to make it a disaster, but if it's a straight up and down vote, if it's this or that, I'm ready to take a vote right now.
I I disagree with your characterization of my comments, Rich. My, I've been at every hearing for this for, since they've come to us. I think this is the ninth one we've had about this. And we've asked a lot of questions about it, but because I think that this is a good project. Doesn't mean I haven't considered all of the issues and and that have been raised. I'm not quite finished. Um, uh, and it doesn't mean that I don't think that there are impacts and it. And what I've, I've asked a lot of questions to understand what, whether the impacts can be resolved or not. You know, and um, the fact is that all projects will cause change in the neighborhood. And, you know, not all changes that. And so if, you know, if I'm of the opinion that it's a good project. Doesn't mean I don't care. Doesn't mean I haven't scrutinized. So I just want to be clear about that.
So, so I'm sorry to jump on you, but um, I agree with you and I've been in, I I think I've been in all of them. Maybe I missed one. I don't recall. I'd have to look at the dates, but in the very first meeting, I recall, oh, I'm not saying you did. But I've heard since the inception of this project coming to us, that this was a great project and we should vote it in as is. I've been hearing that since the first time they came in. I'm not saying it's wrong, but to hear that that's not kind of what's been going around the town, it is. I'm seeing it on Facebook. I see it in board meetings, in other, other committees. I think that's awful because that's not our job. Our job is not to just say, hey, we're afraid of every developer, so we're just gonna say yes to everything. Now, I agree with you. I'm not saying, I wasn't going that route of saying that you're trying to do something wrong. I'm saying that I feel like what you're telling me, uh, or at least the people that are on the other side of what you're saying is. We're trying to kill a project because I am not trying to kill a project. You know, at all. And I think, I personally, I I apologize. I didn't mean to offend you that way. But I'm also feeling offended because that's not what I'm trying to do here. What I'm trying to do is do what we were, we were voting to do and I, I get it. There's a lot of people that like this and I want to do what's right for them. There's a lot of people that want to see in the neighborhood that have some concerns. Or we, just as board members, have general concerns when we're doing this job that we should have put everything through that lens. And so, again, I am interested in getting into, keep getting into the weeds to work this out. But we've spent most of like the last hour just saying it's a project or it's not a project, and I think that's terrible.
Okay, let's, let's talk about another condition just to get back on the track of of talking about conditions, um, if we could. One of the um, conditions that was actually suggested by the developer was. A traffic impact mitigation contrib- contribution. So they, they offered that to the town, so I thought we should probably add that as a condition. Um, the bylaw, um, doesn't really apply to this because the bylaw applies to special permits. And this is a site plan approval, but is Tim still here? Tim, I'm, I'm assuming there's a way. To put their contribution into a fund that would get used in this area. Is Tim still with us or?
I'm always with you. Every night. Yeah, the fund, the fund exists. And and if it's a voluntary contribute, I I just, you know, you, you gotta be mindful that there, there are things in this project that. Are got obligations of statute there, you know, so let's just ma- make sure that any kind of language is clear that this is a. Voluntary contribution, um, and and the project's not conditioned on it, um, because.
Oh, so it can't be a condition. It's a voluntary thing. Okay.
If, 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 if the applicant has, has offered it, you know, in, in the course of the, the hearing, um. Uh, we, we should absolutely welcome that type of thing.
We would say that the applicant has offered.
Right, exactly. So, you know, acknowledge and memorialize the decision, but it can't be a thing, you know, if they, if they come back and say, you know. Actually, there's, you don't have any hook in them to.
Okay, so we don't write it as a condition, but we note that they have offered and we would be, we would.
Yeah, in the text of the decision, you would say when you were talking about the project, la, 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 and we'd say that, you know. The developer recognizing the impact of traffic on the, you know, the situation in East Milton. Has, um, you know generously donated, agreed to donate a sum to the traffic mitigation committee or something. You know, that sort of general kind of what a great thing this is, you know, to, so this doesn't look like a requirement.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, so during conversation, we talked about a swell or a bump out. Um, on, you know, to stop the wrong way on the one way of mechanic. Um, but we can't require that or even condition that. It would be up to the. DPW director and the town engineer to decide what mitigations to spend that fund on.
Yes, you can't require that because they don't control that property. And so they can't, they can't put it in.
Right, but it would go to the area. The, the, the fund would go to the area around the development.
Well, that would be up to the traffic mitigation committee to decide.
Oh, okay, so I.
Because we ran into that problem with the Milton Village because we had that special kind of funding. So we can't say, oh, it has to go here. We, it goes to, it's a donation to the traffic mitigation and and make the pitch to traffic mitigation people that that's where that money ought to go.
Okay.
I'm sorry to jump in, but I just figured it's shorter to just say, you know.
No, I appreciate that. No, that was very helpful. Okay, um, so the other point that, um. They had offered to pay for the installation of a sign and a marker for the handicap spot. Um, so we could do the same thing in that same area. So we would just say, we would appreciate them paying for that.
No, I think in site plan approval, you can require the sign and i- if that's a handicap spot for them, right? I mean, it's servicing this building?
It would be on Granite Avenue in front of the building somewhere.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that's, I think that's something that we can put in as a requirement.
Okay, and that, okay, so I was thinking, um, the installation of a, the condition would be. Um, that they install a sign and a marker for handicap spot, um. Let's see, uh, getting, getting installed.
In a, in a location near the entrance to the building or something.
Yeah, under the guidance of the DPW director or something, or under the guidance of the town, maybe the planning board, maybe the, um, planning director, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Because I mean, there's rules or regulations about where you can put handicap spaces, so, you know.
Yeah, so that should be, okay, so, um, all right, so that's, that's that area, so, um. We could go on to, oh, Rich, your hand is up. Is it? Your hand's still up?
No, it's not.
Oh, that's from before, okay. I, I'm having technical difficulties. I can't see anyone's hands tonight, so please jump in. Um, okay, so if we go to number three, I thought that Tim's suggested language. Um, on, uh, you know, the, the. Tim can jump in, but the town requires a drain easement on the site, um, which will need to be shown on a recorded plan. That that was a good condition, engineer's language for sewage and drainage concern, um, well drainage. So there, there should be language, a, a condition that refers to being required to follow all specifications of the town engineer and DPW director.
Yep.
And rules and regulations and anything else, Kathleen, any?
No, no, that's good. I mean, we have a town meeting vote that allows, um, the DP to town to accept those drainage easements without town meeting vote. We passed that, I think, last year or the year before.
Okay. All right, all right, so there's that, um, let's see. And, um, I just wanted to note that the trash is inside, um. So we don't need to worry about fencing our landscape screens for the, for the trash and that. Rat and rodent language is in the general laws of the state, so Kathleen, I'm assuming we don't need to do. Okay, but, but I've heard about the rat issue in East Milton. I just want, I'm sure you have too.
Well, it's mice, uh, and I think I hear one in the house at night, so, yeah.
Oh, yes. Well, they're everywhere. They're not just everywhere.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so, um, so everyone okay with Tim's suggested language on number three? And number three is about the adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, other wastes resulting from the uses of. Permitted or permissible on the site, drainage for surface water, so, okay, good, we got through three, okay. Um, four, adequacy of space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Goods, products, materials and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment. So Kathleen already noted that Granite Avenue is not a state highway, um, so.
In that section, it is up until like the Kennedy, the old Kennedy carpet place.
Right, but that part of Granite Avenue falls under Milton.
That's what was said at the public hearing the last time we had one. Um, they, Marion in her conditions or whatever her draft has sort of just thrown in that. You know, they've got a loading zone, location and size and, you know, on the plan, so.
But it's not off-street. This is off-street.
Um, yeah, I think they had, had, I know when, when Michael was talking to these Milton folks. You know, there is this sort of, I, on the site plan, I mean, there is an area sort of for trucks to enter and kind of turn around. But sort of before the entrance to the garage. Um, I think that came up at one of our public hearings. Um, so that there is a way to pull off Mechanic Street and pull in. And that's where the garbage, I think, pickup is as well, um, is coming in off of Mechanic.
Hmm, I don't know if Tim can pull up the, um, map, but I didn't know that. Um, so, the, the number four read. Reads like the adequacy of space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, so. There is a s- a minor issue and that is that they don't have any off-street loading.
I think they do.
Okay, so we'll take a look.
As I said, we need to look at the plans because I think there is an area, as you come in Mechanic Street, there is a pull-in there. And, you know, sort of before the actual door to the garage. Um, but I have to take a look at the plans. I'm pretty sure that came up in the public hearing.
I don't know how I missed that. So, um, in addition to what Kathleen is saying, they have proposed a loading area.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's, there's arrows right off of Mechanic Street. Tim, if you move your cursor to the east, uh, to, there you go, right there. And there's, there's text down at the bottom, which I can't really see because it's too small. Yeah, the garage door, so, yeah, so in that area there, and then I think there's some other arrows. Sort of pointing, so the driveway, so you see there's a, there's a driveway and there's sort of paving. You know, to the, uh, you know, sort of near the garage doors. I'm pretty sure that's where we listened to the tapes for prior meetings in the public. Hearing. I think that was the general area, um, for, um, pickup and loading.
I'm sorry, it's where the people are coming in and out of the garage door is where.
No, I think it's, no, it's sort of near there. It's to the, you know, I think it's to the, um.
So can I just point out, guys, I think this plan is old. I don't think that we have two curb cuts on Mechanic Street anymore.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is the, this is the, the application document. I'll try to, this.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's changed since then, yeah.
All right, I'll see if I can grab.
Okay. Um, because I know that que- said that question came up at the public hearing and I know Michael answered it. Um, okay.
Because there was a discussion about where the garbage, you know, garbage trucks were coming in and trucks and that sort of stuff, so.
There's nothing on, I'm looking at the new plan and, um, there's a resident parking entry. And there's a, there's a, a door to the trash and recycle room, but it's all, um. Yeah, I'm not seeing. Transformer and bushes and. Yeah, I'm looking at the big plans that he gave me recently and I'm not seeing. That's, that's it right there. Tim just pulled it up. Okay.
Their proposed loading is the curbside. Is that what you were? Yeah. It's not internal and my understanding of the trash recycle is it's bins that are pulled out, um, at pickup. So in a commercial building, it's not done through the town. They have to secure it themselves. Or procure it themselves and they can procure it at a rate that they, that they find necessary. So it doesn't have to be once a week. It could be twice, three times, it could be every day, you know, however they decide they need to handle the trash. So it doesn't have to be dumpster. It doesn't have to require a big vehicle, uh, to go inside the building for a building like this. That's my understanding from. Uh, their presentation. So they, what they've proposed is the, is the loading at the curbside, um. You know, it's, it's not like, um. Um, you know, near the restaurants because you don't Franklin Street and. Adam Street because Granite's a little different situation than that, but, uh, you know, I don't. I don't believe thirty-six Central has a, um, an interior, uh, loading area. I don't believe, uh, eighty-eight Wharf has an interior loading area. Um, I, uh, one thirty-one Elliot does not have an interior loading area. So if we're thinking about, uh, other things that have been approved, that, that hasn't been required elsewhere on. Even bigger projects than this one.
Yeah, okay, so I. Yeah, they, well, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, did you? Um, I, I talked to Kevin Freitag a little bit about this today and so. There are a couple of things. Um, the planning board can say that we think you need to load on-site. Or the planning board can say, well, it makes sense to have the loading area on Granite Street close to the entrance. Um, but if you went that path, um, the planning board could do a condition. Could condition the permit with the requirement that the applicant obtain approval. By the appropriate town committees and departments to create a dedicated loading zone on the public street of Granite. Um, um, and agree to provide snow removal, uh, during development and requires snow removal. Of the loading area in the condo association documents, and then they would be required to come back to the planning board. For review of those plans and approvals, um.
That makes sense.
Well, there's, I mean, one thing that's like not ideal about it is conditioning a permit on another board's permission is unusual. Um.
We do have to do it just for the variances anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, um, I, I think, I think Kevin Freitag was willing to go along with it. But I just wanted the, the board members to know that I'm, that there are, there are those options. You can say. We do think that you need to load it on the site somehow, um, or, yeah, I guess.
No, I think, I think that's absolutely true and I think the proposed language from Kevin is fine. I don't have a problem with that.
So I get a, I get a question, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, I would rather see it on Granite as opposed to Mechanic because it just, it feels like a disaster waiting to happen. Um, we're seeing that on Church Street, we're seeing that on Franklin, um, and so my only question though is two spots. Now, I, I heard, I think Kathleen, you mentioned it, you, we could say, oh, you can't have a restaurant here. I don't, I honestly don't like, like, what if, what if the residents like, would like to see a coffee shop here? I don't know. I'd hate to say you can't make a coffee shop.
Coffee shop is a little different thing than a, than, you know, although. Although those trucks that show up for Starbucks are like.
They're eighteen-wheeler. And so you need more than two spots. You need, you need three at least to fit, to fit one of those trucks.
An eighteen-wheeler is actually seventy to eighty, eighty feet, so that's actually, that's actually three or four. And I, but I'm, I was thinking the same thing, Rich, uh, but I was thinking the residents. If you're moving from out of state and you're bringing, you know, your bed and your couch and everything from wherever you're coming from. And you're moving into a condo and some people like Kathleen might buy two condos next to each other. So she's gonna need an eighteen-wheeler.
Yeah, and the reality is you're gonna have a box truck and, and like another.
Yeah, the condos aren't that big.
Right.
Before on the moving is like other communities, you get a permit from the town so that you can. So that you can occupy those spaces for the move so that they wouldn't become public. Parking for the duration of the move, like, I mean, just the business did it in the other day in my office and on Lotham Street. In the South End, which is also a residential commercial area and. Um they had a permit, you know, to take their parking spaces to move out and move.
When we moved from two twenty-five to two twenty states, the State Street Building to One International Place that robs in gray. It was a long weekend and they had Casey and Hayes trucks in a continuous cycle for three days. Um most of the time in condos, in my experience, you have the condo association that makes arrangements for those moves. They 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 secure the elevator for a period of time, you pay a fee and they secure parking for you, so. You wouldn't want to have dedicated spaces just for movers, they don't have.
Yeah, it was a good example, but I do think like absent the movers.
Yeah.
Um what I, again, my experience, those two spots, what you're gonna end up seeing is trucks parked from that first spot to the left. All the way to where the street, um where mechanic street is, they're just gonna, they're gonna park illegally right there, that's, it's it's gonna happen because. You don't get one delivery truck at a time, you get multiple people, then you gotta get, so there's loading and unloading all the time throughout days. Especially with this amount of um residents and with these businesses. You just, there is a delivery truck in East Milton Square all day long somewhere. Um I mean, even when um I've seen the liquor store get the newspaper drop-offs, they park on the corner of Bassett. And uh Granite, right, there's no spot there, but they park there, so you're gonna end up getting. Instead of those two spaces, they're gonna park from the first one all the way back to where the street is. And so my my suggestion would be the one in front of it, again, I hate to lose a spot. But you should at least have three spots there as loading and unloading, if you actually want to make it like dedicated to to.
I I I think you do need three, but but the thing is a real loading zone, um. Here, Tim, Tim and I did a little homework on it, he said there's another loading zone on Granite Ave. And that is designated from six AM to five PM as a loading zone. So if we're gonna create a loading zone, we would want to create it to be, you know, used as a loading zone for a certain time. Yeah, from from six to.
Which was interesting, I was actually, I just happened to be going over to, I was at the Starbucks when the Abbey Park eighteen-wheeler was delivering. But what was interesting, it was a Cisco truck, I think, but it was staged. Sitting in front of a residence home, like he couldn't deliver until a certain time. So therefore he parked in front of this, one of the neighbors and just parked in front of their house. Waiting until he could get over and then I watched him, he was just chugging and then. Then I saw him pull right up and when I was coming out, then he could do his loading at at whatever time, but. It was right on Franklin and it was, yeah, you have to go all the way around and then you can't see when you're coming around if there's pedestrians walking, it's it's crazy. It's ridiculous, so.
It's a enforcement problem and they don't do it, so.
My experience too is one, conditions are put on other communities, conditions are put. On businesses that they have to manage the deliveries at certain hours and the kind of truck that can come in. If the business is fined or has some kind of consequence, they will do something, you're right about enforcement, everyone who said it. The town, if we really want to make a difference, they have to enforce the permits. The permits say something and then they don't enforce them and it's.
We have those permits in our town, they're just not enforced.
Exactly, and you know, I I can understand it and it's, I I've had this, there are people um. In the master plan implementation committee, talk about East Milton Square and the planning and so forth. And they talk about other communities and the fines that they get, Taber Keely is a commercial real estate broker, he's spoken to it. Dick Burke has spoken to it a number of times, Arthur Doyle has spoken to it a couple, a number of times, so it's not. It's not something that's unique to Milton and the solutions are not something that um are that difficult, they just need to be done.
So here's a. Yeah, so Marion's memo says that um the last one we got says that the loading zone on Granite Ave has to be approved by the town. As well, as well as the parking spaces and so. She said, you know, that should be a condition on any site plan approval would be, you know, that the, we could say. What we we want, we have, you know, the loading area, you know, be three spaces and something like that. But that's gonna be subjected to the approval of the town anyway, because those parking spaces are on town, I mean, our public street.
But if they don't do it and if we make it subject to it and they decide not to, I mean, they they don't have our approval, right?
We could come back and look for a modification if the town says no, they only want to have two loading areas and not three.
Well, I I.
I think, I think Kevin's language is fine, I, you know.
Okay, well, um I think um the uh I'm looking at these two spots and I'm seeing what I think Rich is saying. That that the trucks are gonna go behind those two spots, so I. I do think you need three because you're gonna have bigger, bigger vehicles and and they're gonna end up behind. So when people are coming off mechanic, they're gonna try to take a right, they're not gonna have the visibility, but but it's one way. So they'll be able to get around it, but it's, you know, there's a reason you you start your parking spaces further from the edge of the corner. Um and this, we we're just setting up something that's gonna be um spill over. But um I do think we need three spaces.
Yeah.
And 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 then I I do think because we have this language from Tim that the other loading zone on Granite Ave. Is six AM to five PM, can we put that in the condition?
I don't think the loading zones are something that's set up by the town, but we would recommend, I suppose, that the loadings zones would be those hours.
Okay, um I I didn't know, um so back, um one other challenge that I have. Is that I've parked right here on Granite Avenue and I I do know that, you know, if you. If you open your door too quickly, they're flying because they're coming off the wall, so I mean, I've been there and I, so I I'm in a narrow little car, right? But a truck is gonna be wider, you know, especially like an eighteen-wheeler. Now, they're getting in and out, the studies that we did, the studies that we had done, they didn't. They didn't analyze this as a loading zone area, so I didn't know if we should. Um make a provision. That.
No, I think of it as traffic calming methods, you know, like it has speed bumps all over the place to get people to drive more reasonably. If you're coming down that Granite Ave at like fifty miles an hour because you still think you're on the expressway. And there's some big fat truck who decides to open a door, well, I think that's just perfect.
Well, they're not thinking about that, they're thinking about getting to the light because they're going home and they're flying off the highway, so they're not. I'm worried about the poor truck driver that jumps out of his rig and has to walk either to around the front or around the back to unload. I mean, I.
What were you, Danny, were you thinking of like a curb cut there or something?
I I don't know, I I was thinking uh maybe a provision. Well, that they would come back to the planning board, but we would need, I mean, should shouldn't we have a study or something? Done on on just safety so we we cover ourselves, you know, like.
I think it's a town, it's a town, it's town property, it's a town, you know, it's a public street, um and so.
Are you sure that the analysis didn't include that? Because that's been proposed for some time.
Yeah.
Um.
Tim, you have that study, um.
I think it was T ten, describe parking. Yeah, I think he's in the part that I looked at today, so.
I'm looking at the um. The traffic study.
I mean, Danny, I I think you have to kind of think about what would, what would a study say? You, one, one way or the other, you got to open your door into traffic, whether you're parking your car or your truck or your, whatever it is, and so.
So those parking spots that we're looking at aren't wide, like they're the size of a um car. You know, they're those parking spots, if we make it a true loading zone, we're gonna be expecting. Uh um box, box trucks and potentially eighteen-wheelers if we do the third space. So it would bump out further into the traffic, so I just, you know, I I just. I'm a little bit nervous just going ahead and doing that without any engineering. Um know-how, it's not, it's not my area, so that's why I ask for engineers when I.
Do you have a dimension on those parking spots?
I think they're just the usual sizes that they have in town, I don't.
That's what our engineers would figure out, right? The town engineers should figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess they they should figure it out if they're gonna approve it, they would have to make sure.
Right, you're not gonna, it's not a very good loading dock, if there's no ramps, there's gonna, somebody's gonna need to do some work on figuring out.
Yeah, so they, so they, so what they would need to do is they would need to go. Instead of just sending them to the select board, maybe we should send them to um the town engineer or the DPW or somebody. Um.
Well, I mean, who are the, who are the tra- who are the traffic commissioners?
The town engineer and the DPW director both sit on the traffic commission.
Yeah, so it's the traffic commission, that's where it goes.
So who regulates the curb sign, I guess that, is that the select board?
That's the select board, yes.
All right, if they've got the official determination, then it'll have to go to them, but. I agree with you, the engineering department should definitely.
So if if you want, if you if you want to put in language that makes it explicit, feel free, um it's just ink. Um but in in, the select board will invariably send this to the traffic commission for a recommendation.
Okay.
Guaranteed that that'll happen, if you want to make that, you know, a language in the in a condition, that's totally fine. But this this question will go to the traffic commission for a recommendation, so. Um and at that point, everyone will have their hands on it.
Yeah, and maybe um I think someone, maybe it was Rich, mentioned whether you need a an actual curb cut into the. Uh from that zone so that if you're moving heavy things, you're going to be rolling them, so. You know, whether they're expected to bring something temporary to ramp up the curb or whether we have something is a question that I would send to them as well. Because you want it to work, you want it to work so that they use it, you know, so if you design it such it doesn't work, then it won't get used, that's defeats the purpose, right?
Right.
Yeah, I I mean, the other thing in this, again, I like it right here, um but I would imagine when they presented this, they also thought of. Like the 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 way that a truck would get to the site because that would also stop them from using this, right? If if it's too cumbersome to even get there, well, then they're gonna stop somewhere else and I don't know where that somewhere else is, so I'm assuming. Uh you know, the engineers that looked at this have have vetted that out. And if we're saying this is the size, we'd like to see it in our site plan approval, I mean, I'm good with the town engineers and the town. You know, traffic commission, I mean, they know what they're doing, they should be able to.
Yeah, no, the um the data report says that um that they, you know. Had looked at where loading and design, you know, ride share and all that sort of stuff should be. And so the, you know, the response was that, you know, they were gonna have a delivery plan, blah, 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 on Granite Avenue. And closer to the commercial space and to the front door of the condo, so you know, that also serves deliveries, you can't bring deliveries into the back.
Right.
No entrance back there, and so they said VHB and Beta's, VHB says, our our design guy says. The design eliminates the need for site-related delivery trucks to be on mechanic street.
Excellent, okay. Right, excellent.
Okay, so Tim, do we, do we want to add the the time of six AM to five PM, um?
I think we should to keep it consistent um with the other loading zone.
Okay, so um I'll just. I'm just gonna read the language, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna read the language to Tim and Tim tell me where to put it. So the planning board could condition the permit with the requirement that the applicant obtain approval by appropriate town committees and departments. To create a dedicated loading zone on the public street of Granite Street, should I say?
Granite Avenue.
Granite Avenue, sorry, getting tired, you guys, Granite Avenue. Um should I say uh from six AM to five PM?
Yeah, I, that's what I wanted to. Yeah, I don't know that I agree with that, so the other properties we're talking about are are not residential. And so it makes sense that maybe a restaurant or a bar or. Um even like a hairdresser or whatever isn't gonna have deliveries after six o'clock, but this is residential, you're getting Amazon packed because it's at nine o'clock at night. Um especially at Christmas time, right?
Oh, yeah.
So it wouldn't make sense to restrict this and like ask somebody to restrict it for time, because if I live there, I want my delivery to come to me. Or yeah, Uber, you're right, Uber Eats, what do they?
That's right, that's right, okay, all right, so I'm not gonna put that in there, um.
Rich, I don't necessarily think you're wrong, but if the concern is with enforcement, the more consistent the regulations are, the easier there are to enforce. Um so just. I agree with you, but my issue is I don't think anybody would ever enforce it. And if we put it in there knowing nobody's gonna enforce it because may, I mean, I would agree with the the whoever is the enforcement officer is. Hey, it's Uber Eats, what am I gonna tell him, he can't stop here, yeah, I mean, nobody's gonna enforce that because it's a quick stop and he's gone. And if they're, if if we start like creating something that's never gonna be enforced, well, then, you know, what are we doing? But I I agree with you, like, we want uniformity, but maybe the uniformity is depending on what type of business it is or what type of like.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Rich, it's like, this is mixed use, it's different than commercial, purely commercial. And I think we can have a commercial policy and a mixed-use policy.
Yeah, and then you're not.
You're gonna have need at past five o'clock in a building like this, I agree.
Okay, so do we want to say for twenty-four hour use?
Don't say anything.
Yeah, just leave it blank.
Just leave it blank.
Okay, well, Kathleen, you're gonna be walking down that street and there's gonna be a sign. And it's gonna say six PM. But you'll be on to the next committee, so don't worry, because you're gonna be at the CPA, um okay. Um, all right, it Ca- uh Meredith, are you, are have you waited on this, are you okay?
This is the first mixed use that does not have onsite drop-off and and I. And it's maybe not designated at eighty-eight Wharf and the LA Street, the other thirty-six Central, but they do pull in, they. That's where the movers go in, that's where the access to the, you know, that everything goes. Goes in and particularly, you know, a move-in, move-out, it's all restaurant deliveries. At eighty-eight Wharf, it's all, they pull right up and right in, so.
Sorry, my my driveway doesn't hold a moving truck either.
Yeah, well, I think we do need three parking spaces, though.
Yeah. Yep, and so that's three, and then you mentioned another handicap, so that's, so we've just, so those are four spaces right there.
I think, though, we should also ask the traffic commission to weigh in on the handicap. Because I I, you know, the there is a certain number of parking spaces or if there's a particular access need. That um that should be.
It's important, and that's important, and that's why I'm saying that definitely we need at least one. And if thirty-six Central actually has two in front of it, and I think it's great, so, um but, yeah.
All right, so three spaces, okay, so are are we in?
The other thing I'll just say about the handicap spot, so you have to be able to get through the curb again on the handicap spot. So that's another curb cut, so maybe would the handicap spot be the third spot? You know, that's a management issue then, but because you normally would get a pretty big fine for parking in the handicap spot.
But is it required to have a curb cut? I know, like, in front of thirty-six Central, there there isn't a curb cut, but there's proximity to.
I mean, the challenge, the challenge for this location is if the driver is handicapped and they've got to get out on the driver's side here. On Granite Ave, good luck. Or some other need, I mean, the reality is um the indoor handicap spots are the ideal kind of spot.
He has handicap ban spots on in the garage.
Well, I'm wondering, you can make in it, I wonder if they can make an arrangement where if it's a handicap visitor to the retail space. Uh they could use the interior spot by calling ahead. It's just safer, it's much safer.
Michael was talking about that for visitors anyway, any kind of.
If if it's, you know, handicap is not just people in wheelchairs, but if you had a person in a wheelchair, what would they do? They'd have to go all the way down to the curb cut at the intersection on Granite Ave, I mean, that would be like wholly unsafe to do.
Right.
Isn't this, I mean, wouldn't the handicap spot be something that's kind of regulated, I mean, do we have?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it has to be a requirement for state law, you've got so many.
Gotta be a requirement that they're gonna need to follow here, and if, you know, either there is one or there isn't one, it's gonna tell them how many.
Yeah.
And where it's gonna go.
Yeah, I mean, the building, this kind of building has to be accessible and so um, you know, they. The handicap, so the question is, is the handicap parking spaces indoors serve both residential and business, I would say it should serve both. And then you don't need the handicap spot at the street, which is really an unsafe condition, but that's really a building code issue too. That's really a building code issue too, or a handicap code issue, the state code, like a building code. Um, for the, this type of building, in terms of accessibility, um, and normally to meet that code requirement, you wouldn't. This wouldn't meet it at the street, you know, it, it just, it, it doesn't have it, so you look up in there on that plan, you see that striped area next to them. That's the, the space for somebody to get out of a vehicle and not be in a driveline or in another, have another car. That gives them the maneuverability to get out of their vehicle and get a wheelchair, so you wouldn't be able to do that on the street. So, I know that they, they are provided at the street in places where there's no other, you know, just so there is a place. But on a new building like this, to meet the handicap, handicap code, I can't see that passing.
Well, well, we just would have to say that they have to comply with, you know. You know, due, we would have to find dutifully approved, you know, and required handicapped access.
I mean, it's, it's kind of redundant, but we could do it. Redundant, because it, they have to. Joe won't give them one.
Alright, um. Um, okay, so, um. So, okay, we're at number five, um. If, if, if we have consensus for the last, we agreed to three parking spaces, and, um. We, we, we agreed to the handicap spot, um, alright. Uh, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, um, proper use of the site with respect to unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings to each other. Now, um, I wanted to respond to Frank Schroth's request here, I'm thinking on this project in relation to the master plan. Um, I have a few thoughts, I'd just like to read quickly if I could. Um, in the m- master plan volume one, it referred to a planning board survey. Um, quoted in the master plan, most, it, and it was done in two thousand nine. Most respondents were satisfied with the town's historic character, passive recreational facilities in small-town New England feel. Um, quotes from the master plan volume one, quote, phase one emphasizes the small-town atmosphere. That's treasured in contrast to the adjacent urban centers. Phase one priorities, increase the variety of housing types in Milton to meet the needs of a greater variety of households. While ensuring that new housing is harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. Quote, create compelling mixed-use centers that balance community-scale businesses with housing and public spaces. Phase two, master plan goals and objectives, quote, preserve and enhance the individual character of each of Milton's neighborhoods. Including the natural and historic features of each, page thirty-four, quote. Historically sensitive approaches to redevelopment in existing commercial centers, Milton Village, East Milton, are needed to preserve character. Quote, desirable, actually, this, this isn't a quote, it's just a couple of words. Desirable bucolic New England character are all words describing Milton throughout this document. Page fifty-six, quote, support neighborhood associations, celebrate neighborhood association achievements. Page sixty-five, goal statement, to preserve Milton's character defined by its small-town atmosphere. Natural and historic features and the contrast that these create when compared to the urban centers along the town's borders. Page sixty-eight, over and over throughout the master, this is a quote, over and over throughout the master planning process. The citizens of Milton cited character as one of the town's most important assets. Unlike cities with high building densities and limited parkland, or rural towns with extensive open space and lower densities. The character of Milton lies somewhere in between. Another quote, the town's individual neighborhoods will also need protection and enhancements. To continue providing a safe and comfortable place to live, the major gateways leading into Milton will need improvement. So that visitors know when they have arrived and feel welcome. Goal number one of the master plan focuses on preserving the natural and historic features. Neighborhoods and gateways that have drawn residents to Milton, so that town character may remain intact for future generations. Page seventy, creating distinctive gateways into town. Finally, to mark Milton's entrances and make it more welcoming to visitors from outside the town. Will need to improve the sense of arrival or gateways. By creating recognizable gateways at all entrances, Blue Hill Avenue, Adams Street, Granite Avenue, Randolph Avenue, Central Avenue. Page eighty-one, define entry into the town, use a coordinated design that complements the town's historic character. Inform motorists that they are entering a neighborhood. So, for, for my summary, taking all of these quotes from the master plan into account, what I draw from that is. The citizens of the town feel that we don't wanna rush headlong into developments that compromise. The essential qualities that make Milton different from its urban neighbors. I think most people would agree with revitalization and with mixed use in this area of East Milton. We would just like to see more of a balance, a more sensitive and thoughtful approach to design. And density, and not at the expense of what the master plan refers to as the small-town atmosphere that's so treasured. Or at the expense of enhancing the historic features of one of Milton's neighborhoods. In other words, I look at each project as an opportunity to work with an applicant and a neighborhood to make the project the best it can be. So, um, I mention this here because I think this section is about the design. And, and I just wanted to point out those things that I, I read in the master plan.
Can I just comment on the master plan, since I've been sharing the master plan implementation committee since its inception and was on the. Committee, the master plan committee. One of the things that you, um, didn't mention, Denny, was the recommendation to do. Uh, planning in each of our business districts and to look at economic and redevelopment opportunities, including mixed use in those districts. And that is something that we've been working on, um, with Milton Village. And then, wi- with East Milton, first with the, um, the planning board, get engaging with Urban Land Institute for their technical assistance panel. And then following up on those recommendations and engaging, um, Barrett Planning Group. Um, and we have, I, I, so I look at that as sort of, um. As, both of those as follow-up to the master plan, and, um. And, and the Barrett, um, report, you know, builds on both of those. And I, I would like to note that the Barrett Report has recommendations, uh, let me get the page number. Well, first of all, on page thirty-one, they have a massing model, which is a massing model of the vision plan that they developed during that work with the community. And it shows a five-story building on this triangle, uh, and it shows it actually taking up full footprint. Um, rather than having it be, uh, what's proposed before us today, but on page, um. Get to the next portion, on part three, the recommendations, on page, uh, forty-nine, strategies. They have strategies for exploration, uh, and it's on two pages, uh, forty-nine and fifty. And they talk about, um. Uh, basically, building on their work and taking it further by adopting zoning. And there's, what they're recommending is a mixed, a business slash mixed-use district. Or an overlay district such as a chapter forty R, or a PD, PDD as they call it, Plan Development District. Um, and in it, what they're highlighting is that there should be some sub-districts. So that it's not all treated exactly the same, and that they would calibrate the building and the site standards to the sub-districts. And this sub-district that this site is in, is in the mixed-use center sub-district, and within that sub-district. Um, they recommend that there be, um, a fifty-five foot maximum building height. Now, with it, with some ground floor high of ten feet, which is succeeds. Actually, um, sorry, giving mixed-use center actually goes up to sixty feet in height. Um, and five stories, and requiring an upper story setback at three stories, uh, rather than. Um, and that was all the way around the building, because they're going five stories all the way around. And they also have a, a parking recommendation of, uh, one per dwelling unit. And one per one thousand square feet of commercial space. Um, and this, um. Is again highlighted in the strategies for ex- exploration, um. You know, instead of necessarily providing all parking on, on one parcel, to look at some kind of common parking in the district, which has been discussed some, which I think is a. Uh, is something that could be part of any, uh, planning of the future, but, you know, these are things that, um, is our most recent work, that's been an expansion. Of the work of the master plan that's looked at this neighborhood in particular. We best, we invested a fair amount of, uh, financial resources for the planning board budget to engage, to have this work done. Um, and I, I'm hoping that we will, uh, move forward and discuss this in more detail with respect to zoning. But with respect to this project, uh, I think that, uh, this project is certainly aligned with, uh, with the Barrett. Uh, report and recommendations.
I don't know if Meredith had her hand up, I can't tell.
Well, I was gonna ta- you know, talk further about this, but I think it's really, um, it applies more to number five, so. I don't know if we wanna go to number five, and then.
Yep, let's jump into number five.
Then we can sort of, in an appropriate context to apply what, what I read the master plan to say as well, and, um. I don't know, I don't have to go first, but.
No, go, go right ahead, we're, we're in number.
So again, looking at, you know, I'm looking at other mixed use, because we don't have a, you know, we're not zoned for, necessarily for mixed, mixed use. Um, in our commercial districts, um, what I looked at, I looked at Hendry's, I looked at eighty-eight Wharf, I looked at, um. Thirty-six Central, and what is consistent in almost every single plan except for eighty-eight Wharf. Is not only the setbacks, which I mentioned earlier, um, but per section three J paragraph two. The base number of housing units is one per one thousand square feet of qualifying lot area. So, and then section three J four B, um, exclusive. Excluding, not including parking, shall not have a floor area ratio in excess of one point five times the area of that lot. In, and that would be, if it's in a, within a business district, which this is. Um, green open space has also been part of it, so, in looking at. The, this, the lot sizes, because most are, um, larger than this lot size. This lot, um, is a little over twenty thousand square feet, the Hendry's site. Um, that was calculated to be about thirty-seven thousand square feet, that allowed for thirty-eight units. So pretty much we're seeing, per, if this, if this site that we're looking at is over twenty thousand. If you were to equate that to what, where the other sites have given, there would be about twenty-one units on here. Far less than what, what is being proposed, um, and so, I would like to see something, not maybe exactly that. But something more in line with, with what we have done as far as density, because density, um. Is an issue, people don't say, I wanna move to Milton, because I, they don't leave the city to say, I'm looking for density, so I'm gonna move to Milton. That is, people move from the city, and especially during the pandemic, people have said. We wanna go to a less dense area, we want more green space, and that's why we, they come to Milton. They love the walkability of East Milton Square, it is highly desirable, it's a great place to live, but. This is putting incredibly high density on an already dense area. And I think the unit count is very far off, um, I've talked before about the design, I think, um. I think what we are as a, looking at site plan, is something that will fit in. With East Milton Square, and, and the commercial district is a very small commercial district in, in East Milton. Um, it's great to have some extra commercial come in, um, I think housing is an issue, affordable housing is an issue. But to create a, to put a building in, and not only is it dense compared to other. Mixed-use sites that have been, that have been approved, but visually, the impact and the, the imposing structure. You're putting a five-story building to, next to a, on one side, a one-story building, on the other side, a two-story building. So you've got a one-story, a five-story, and then a two-story, and to say that you're not gonna see this, that only the highway is gonna see this. I completely disagree with that argument, I, to say that, for those of us who come in and go to the South Shore, come in. We drive on Granite Avenue, you see it from the opposite side of the highway, every point in Milton. You are gonna be looking at five stories, and it just, it is absolutely, I think, um. And a unit count, um, which, the unit count is what's driving the floor count, um, I just, I think it's, it's just. And I've said it from the beginning, I think it, design-wise, does not look like it fits into Milton, it's certainly. Um, I think good, I think good development is, especially in a, um, business districts. That there should be a cohesiveness, not to say that every building needs to look alike. But that there needs to be a connection to one another as far as the units, as far as the, the buildings go. Otherwise, we're building more of what we already have, where we've just got a mismatch of all different types of architectural styles. And what we're doing is we're putting something, again, that looks nothing like anything else in the business district, and. Not only height, but, but visually as well, so, I think back, going back to, um. What we've done consistently with, um, eh, one unit per one thousand. Going in that direction is much more appropriate than the, than what we have for a unit count of thirty-four.
So, do, do we have, Kathleen, do you have offhand what the FAR is that we're allowing in Milton Village and the other business district that we've done recent zoning on? I can pull it up, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's a more, a, a greater density than that. The, the problem with the small sites is, um, eh, that is different than the larger sites. Um, in different locations, I, you know, uh. These kind of comparisons, I think, are a little bit challenging, but, you know, uh, Hendry's was something that was, took ten years to get the approvals through. Um, because the zoning wasn't, uh, wasn't working, and they had continued to come back. And they pro- they proposed a forty B in.
They got a forty B approved.
Yes, that's right, they got a forty B approved in between, which was gonna be much more dense without any commercial space. And some people wish they had gone ahead, because that would have added the units to the, uh, SHI, um, you know, the, um. The, um. But the, the FAR, you know, the one we were looking at, Milton Village, what I wanted to point out, and what we, I think we, we all thought was valuable, is that we had to. Uh, make sure that the zoning would actually be workable, that, um, financially, I know a lot of people don't wanna hear about finances. But that's what allows zoning to work, is that if it, if it doesn't work, then, then we won't get any new development with the zoning that we do, right? Because, um, tha- that's a challenge, you have to have something that can work, so I just wanted to see if we could pull up that, uh, I'll look it up, but. Comparisons, we should look at that FAR.
Could I just respond to that? I actually would like to hear about the finances, it's something that the developers don't really share with us. They just say, oh, you know, we, we can't afford to do that, I mean, we had, um, we had a developer. Um, tell us, you know, he, he wanted to make a million dollars per condo. And, and now he's saying he wants to change the age limit, because he's having trouble selling them for one point seven million, which is what he wants now. So he said he needed a certain unit count, otherwise he was never, it, it wasn't gonna be worth doing the project if he didn't get the unit count, cause he. He, he could only, only make a million dollars a condo, and now he can't sell them for one point seven million, so he wants to change. The agreement all these years later, so, I mean, I, they don't, I, I wish they would share their information, and. I, I, I am always interested in the finances of it, but they, 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 they haven't really shared their finances, and. At one point I did ask, and that they wouldn't give it to us, so.
I'll tell you that in Milton Village, we did have two, at least two developers look at the zoning and do their own pencil analysis. Like, if, if I follow the zoning, this is what it allows me to build, and then, you know, do their fact calculations to see, back it out, to see if it would work for them. And, uh, the reply was that it would work, um, for a certain kind of, like, vocal developer that doesn't have. Multiple layers of kind of. that doesn't have multiple layers of kind of team that they would have to hire. So like a developer builder kind of one who doesn't have an intermediary, because then that adds cost to them. So you know, there, you can hire a firm, you know, to do it. Like if we look at, when we hopefully look at zoning for East Milton, you know, you can hire someone to do an economic analysis as a part of it. I mean, it's not, in really what you have to look at is the interrelationship between your land costs, your development costs, construction costs, and what the market is, you know. So you know, if you, the market keeps going up, that's good on one hand, bad on, on the, on the hand of affordability, right? But construction costs, you know, have gone up too. So like what the construction costs were for something like that's even under construction now are a lot different than what it would be if you bid it out today. Because that's just what's happened in the marketplace. So you know, each, like if somebody did a pencil analysis for what they were, let's say they got a project approved three years ago, their construction costs are not the same as they were three years ago. So what you think their profit might be is going to be different because their costs have gone up. So it's, you know, it's not a guarantee. It's, it's very risky business, actually.
Yeah.
Kathleen has, Kathleen has her hand up and then I.
Okay.
I'll let her speak first.
Thank you for telling me.
I just sort of wanted to address the, you know, the master plan and the, and the notion that, you know, that projects like this is, you know, the sort of insult to the, you know, character and village of, of Milton. Yeah, as I said, I've lived in East Milton for thirty years and driving along Granite Ave, just as I did the other day, and you come into town, that corner is, is a, you know, it's like a drive by shooting. That's just not a way to sort of say, welcome to town. And I think that this proposal is, while it's something that's different, it addresses a need in our town. And there's lots of coded words in, unfortunately, in, in, in our master plan that kind of disguises, you know, a sense that, well, we've had it made and we wanted to keep looking like this so that other types of people can live here. The diversity committee, we spoke to the other day, Melinda and I and Allison, and, you know, to sort of deal with, you know, housing issues here and zoning issues here in Milton. And the message we got from Linda Champion was that, you know, we, we aren't, we aren't addressing the needs of, you know, a significant portion of our population. And, and as I've said many times, there are lots of people in my neighborhood I know who would be delighted to be able to move, to stay in this neighborhood that we really love and be able to get something else that's a, that's a housing ability that we don't have right now. And you know, they maybe have to wait for the Corcoran thing in East Milton, the residents of East Milton to be approved, but that could be forever. And, you know, and I think that does make a statement of, of, of an entrance to the town. That's a nice way. There's really no, you know, overarching design area, design look to East Milton, not like Milton Village, which clearly has the Baker and the brick and all that sort of stuff that you see at the Baker, you know, factories and all that sort of stuff. We don't have that over here. There's like some stucco, there's some brick, there's some whatever, you know. And so it doesn't really have kind of a design feature. As you, or me say many times, I grew up in a village outside the city of New York. I know what villages look like, Scarsdale, Eastchester, Larchmont, you know, Maranick, Rye, Arson. Those, they all have a look, lots of it's Tudor. We don't have that much here of Tudor for some reason. But I, you know, I think, I hear people say, oh, it's just, you know, it's just a, it's going to make us look like, you know, South Boston or, you know, Quincy or God forbid, or something like that. And I don't think that's really the case. I think the architect has done a good job dealing with a really difficult site. And it's right on the expressway. So I didn't, you know, I think it, it provides housing that we, we desperately need in this town, a type of housing that we desperately need. And, and this sort of goes back to my question in the beginning is that, you know, we were, if you're just going to sort of put in all these conditions and say that it can't get built, then why are we having this? Why just, just like vote no on the site plan approval and leave it at that? But I think, you know, we have, we should put in some conditions that have been suggested and, and move forward with a vote and, you know, go from there.
I just want to go back to everybody just quickly. The F A R in Milton Village is, maximum is one point six five. And I'm looking for the gross square footage of this development on the application. I haven't found it yet, but I can get a calculation as soon as I find it.
But I also think that the village is very different because it, it, it is, it's just a very different site with a lot of very large mill buildings that are pre-existing mill buildings that are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I totally, I agree with you, Meredith. I absolutely agree with you.
We're talking.
Village is totally different, totally different.
I know, but we're, we're comparing and suggesting that we should do F A R based on some of those sites down there. So I just want to have a comparison.
Okay.
I would give more of the one thousand, the one unit per one thousand square feet lot size. As far as density, back to, you know, the, the issue being density.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at the F A R.
Okay, so we're, we're rounding up to eleven o'clock. I think that, I think we could put a pin in design, put a pin in the parking question. But the last one is six and I actually think we would probably get to consensus pretty quickly if people have the patience. Because Cheryl's actually really good at lighting and Tim proposed some language. And we usually all agree on lighting. So if you can bear with me, I'd just love to throw it out there. So Tim's proposed conditions, okay, I'll read, number six, the adequacy of lighting to maintain a safe level of illumination on the site and, and whether lighting is properly shielded to protect adjacent properties. So Tim's proposed conditions, the planning board should condition its approval on the designation of the proposed projects. Does, wait a minute.
No, no, it's conditioned as approval on site lighting being compliant with the standards of the International Dark Sky Association, which has been a typical condition in many recent planning board approvals, that lighting be set to the minimum level while still ensuring site safety and security and for lighting to be set on a timer or a motion sensor where possible to prevent unnecessary light spillover.
Thank you.
One thing that we've done on some, sorry, one thing we've done on some of them is, and after dark sky association, we've put, or equivalent. So that.
Yeah.
Something changed.
Works for me.
Yep, and then one, and then another thing that I've learned from Cheryl is we like to put the light at, at about ten feet high, pointed down. And I'll just, I'll just put, put on my outdoor lights turned off at night with a sensor for security to turn them on, but otherwise they're turned off. And we could do some limit of the lights on the balconies, either say no lights or I noticed on the site plan approval from thirty six and fifty Elliot Street that the lighting, this is what they had in that agreement, lighting of entries and porches, we could say balconies, shall be in the roof without significant light overspill. Lighting of the balconies without roofs shall be on the building wall directed downward to avoid light overspill.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely not on the, I think not on the underside of the balcony above, you know. So wall mount, I think for the balconies makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Okay, you don't like the.
I like the, I, the requiring it to be a wall mount. And then one thing is they do have a common outdoor space. And, you know, I do think it's worth limits on lighting and noise in that outdoor space, the common space. I, I don't have a plan.
Oh, yeah, don't they have something on the, on the roof?
Yeah, it's like a common roof area, which is, you know, it could be, you know, if you did string lights and it could be nice and interesting, but you just wouldn't want those on like without limit.
Yeah, that's probably something you'd want to put in the condominium documents that said that they, you know, condominium.
Well, those lights wouldn't be dark sky compliant, I guess, so.
No.
All right, so there's, maybe there's not a common roof deck, maybe I, maybe it's just.
I don't think there's a roof deck.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I wouldn't want any, I wouldn't, okay.
Because you think about the noise from the expressway, you'd be like, yeah, that's a fabulous thing.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, so Tim's conditions are good.
Okay, so then, you know, we, we can talk, there were like two random safety questions we can go over next time. And then we can talk about those two things that we put the pin in. We could tack them on to our public hearing night, which is unfortunate. Otherwise, we'd have to book another meeting.
Cheryl's going away and so you wouldn't, you know, that wouldn't be good. And you have a time limit for when you can get the decision issued.
That's an issue, okay. All right, well, it's eleven o'clock. Would people like to keep going?
No.
I know you wouldn't like to keep going, so.
Kathleen, I can, I, I can go back and double check it. I think that we've got thirty five days to render a decision after the close of the public hearing, which I think next week is still within that.
It's still good, but we can't go very much past that because Cheryl will be away.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I know. I, I hear you. I just, it, next week is still in the clear from the clock perspective. If not attended.
When, when does Cheryl get back? Because then we might not be in the clear about the time Cheryl gets back.
It's too late.
January third. I'm, I'm gone, presuming COVID doesn't change this in the next ten days. I'm gone the nineteenth through the, through the third.
For the nineteen through the third.
Twenty second is the deadline.
I'm gone for weeks.
But, but we could tack it on to the, our meeting is on the sixteenth. We could tack it on to the discussion on the sixteenth. We could, we could talk about, we could wrap up design, we could wrap up the parking issue. And then the, yeah, the, I, I think, I mean, it'll be a tough night because we have two public hearings, but I mean.
So maybe if we, if we think about a little bit strategy wise relative to it, I mean, what it sounds like really is the two things are related and it relates to density. And, you know, I think there's been various points made, some passionately, some not, about, about those things. So you know, we're, I guess, you know, where do we think we want to be on that? You know, next week, you know, kind of be prepared, I guess. What's the, what's the question and answer that we need to resolve, you know, in order to move forward with our decision on that day? So it seems to me that the parking is really related, tied to the density. And we're talking about, we're talking about thirty three.
All, all things are related, but I really do have an issue with the parking because the citizens have told me about the parking forever. But I, I do agree with you, things are related, but, but.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, we're talking about thirty three units. So let's just remember that. And I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'll try and get the square footage so we can see where we are with the F A R on it. But you know, you know, is it possible, I don't know, with the close of the hearing and this question of, you know, viability of project, I mean, I don't know if it's any question that could be posed back to the applicant.
I think the applicant has said as many times as we've asked, he said it to the East Milton folks and he said it, you know, he's met with them four times. And he said, no, he can't take a floor off.
Okay, we're not, we're not asking him to take a floor off. We're talking about parking, but I think, I think we've, I think we've talked about.
I thought we were talking about parking and density and so they said they were related. So I'm just saying, the answer is, and so, and on the, I mean, on the forty Bs and stuff like that, when they first started, we always went through the financials and we were told by the state, we can't do that anymore. And I think that's probably the same sort of thing is true with site plan approval. It's not part of the, part of the parameters of what you are allowed to do in site plan approval.
Kathleen, it's, it's not necessarily, it's, it's what fits on the site is what we're supposed to be looking at.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying that you can't ask for the financials.
Well, I just, I agree. I, I, I asked, I didn't want to give them, I moved on because I, I, you, it's up, it, if, if they offer financial as a reason, then you say, okay, fill me in on your reasoning and they do or they don't, and that's fine. But I just said I, I, you know, I, anyway, I think it's eleven o'clock. It's eleven o'clock, I think.
I just want us to kind of be in a position to make a decision next week is all I'm trying to get at, just like to make sure we're all. Sorry, I averted the scene. I just want to have us, you know, be productive with the short amount of time we're going to have on it is so that we can make a decision. And so if, just so we're clear about where our differences are and where we think we might be able to get, that's all.
Okay. I entered in a motion unless you wanted to.
I have a question. Yes, please.
Yes.
I just didn't want to jump on anybody, but I do have a question before we wrap up. So you, you said the sixteenth. What else is on that night?
Memory clinic, A D U, public hearing.
Okay, just so you know, I'm going to be late to that meeting too. I mean, unfortunately, this is Christmas time. I've got a very large department I'm responsible for in this area. And so that's, we're having a party that night, so I skipped out of the party tonight. I'm skipping out of that one, but I am going to be late. So it's either that, it's here, I'm late or I don't join our meeting on the sixteenth or we move it. But as we're moving closer to Christmas, I think all of us have these issues. And so I'm fine keeping it on the sixteenth, but I won't be here until shortly after eight o'clock.
Okay, well, we'll put this one last on the agenda. Okay, so we'll do memory clinic and A D U.
The memory clinic first because I have a community preservation committee meeting at six. So I'll be starting into this one a little.
Okay, Ned better be there. We need him in head for the memory clinic. Okay, yep. Okay, that sounds good. So memory clinic, A D U, four forty Granite Ave. See you next Thursday if anyone wants to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Meredith?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, see you Thursday. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.